And has posted the notice of this meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to reconvene into public session?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Back into public session.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. Can I, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice to all.
Linda, can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes. I mean here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Roswellitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Linda, are there any communications for the board?
The board did receive some emails regarding a number of different issues related, well, various issues. We also received a press release today that I wanted to make note of. I wish I had got my, Dylan Tullock, he is an eighth grade student here at the middle school, has been notified by the National Geographic Society that he is one of the semifinalists eligible to compete in the 2015 New Jersey National Geographic State B. So congratulations.
And I just want to also inform you that the board received a letter from the mayor just giving us their, the resolution that they passed in support of the opposition to the hot take for charter school. So that one is for the board as well. Linda, sorry, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from December 8th and February 23rd?
Some moved.
Second.
Any comments? Linda, can we have a roll, please?
Ms. Versa?
Abstained from December 8th and yes for February 23rd.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Roswellitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Soto, can we have the superintendent's report, please?
Yes, let's begin with student update. Okay. So since the past week, we've had a DECA states competition, which I was away at. And so overall, DECA club did very well. A majority of our members advanced to finalist rounds and, but only the team of Jamie Ashenow and Olivia Bridges will be advancing to the ICDC competition in, wait for it, Orlando, Florida. Right? So we'll also be sending, I think about nine or 10 students with the Thrive Community Service Program. And so we'll start fundraising soon to cover the trip costs. And also, student congress has seen a lot of activity recently. We're running a few fundraisers. Just recently, we completed the Pennies for Patients fundraiser. We, it ended February 27th and HPHS raised approximately $600. And this fundraiser is going to be to fund leukemia patients and the treatment for them. Also, we will be holding a Middlesex County Spring School Food Drive. It started March 2nd, it'll end March 13th. Each grade will donate food and supplies. And each grade in the high school has bins in center hall. And the grade that donates the most will be credited $1 per can toward their, toward their fund, toward their, you know, fundraisers for their future prom, I guess. Also, in April, we'll be holding Autism Speaks Awareness. It's a month-long event where student congress plans to work with Ms. Dewhurst to plan a month-long fundraising campaign to raise money for autism awareness. Also, discovery workshops have taken place during the park. Senior students learned about dating violence inducing positive emotions, refusing and persuading, and small business. And so also, we had Filman, the Filman Conference in Philadelphia. Students attended and Highland Park took home the Outstanding Small Delegation Award. So it's a very big award and it shows how great of a school we can be, even though we're still a small community. Also, the environmental club has seen a lot of activity. They have recently begun managing and monitoring the compost bins during lunch. This is just one of the small activities they do to ensure sustainability and, you know, green activities in Highland Park. Currently, their overarching project is Sustainable Jersey for Schools, in which schools meet certain requirements and certifications established by Sustainable Jersey, which is an NGO. And schools that meet these certifications are able to receive grants and higher sustainability qualifications. In terms of sports, the winter sports teams have concluded. Spring track starts tomorrow. Baseball and softball practices are now starting as well. The tennis season has begun last Friday. Although the first few days are going to be just fitness, we hope to continue on to a regular tennis practice as soon as the courts clear. Biolance is currently sixth in the state. It's the club that takes competitive testing and they've accomplished sixth in the state and Fizzleets has accomplished 31st in the state. Also, senior video filming starts this week, I think tomorrow, yes. And also, senior Darcy Thompson is heading the project. We'll be interviewing students on their four, senior students on their four years at our high school, what they've done, what they've learned, the friends they've made, the trips they've gone to and such. Also, National Honor Society members will go on Habitat for Humanity trip on March 11th, during which they'll help build houses for low-income groups. We currently have in progress, the student congress is planning a potential spring soiree, which is, in other words, a spring dance. And so I have a question and concern, you know, after my, whatever I say, I want to get an update on the website and like what we've done on it and the progress we've had on it. And also, all four grades have expressed concerns regarding the park. You know, I haven't taken it, but it's been very disruptive to my day. We've had these workshops and they can teach students things. However, some students don't go to the workshops, they go to different workshops, they go to different classes. And that even degrades further from the, you know, the valuability of, the value of that time. And so, you know, the juniors that I've talked to that have currently taken the, that have taken the park, they said that it's an inefficient way to, you know, track and monitor your learning capability because they've taken tests in class, they've gotten As, A pluses, they've written AP essays in their AP Language and Literature classes and they've done, you know, they've done amazing on them. They've gotten like seven eights on the essays out of a possible score of 10. I personally have taken these park practice tests and, you know, I myself, I got a four on the AP test for AP Literature last year. That's not an easy accomplishment, but I take the park and, you know, I feel like I don't know any English at all, I don't know anything at all. I mean, it's, it's very heartbreaking because I should be accomplishing so much with this park. But, you know, so many students have been saying it's an inefficient way to, you know, like benchmark their capabilities and learning. So, you know, it's inefficient, disruptive, and when you've got people that are getting fives, fours, threes on AP tests, which are, you know, nationally ranked, nationally recognized, you know, it's kind of alarming to see that they're not doing as nearly as well on the park. You know, what's, what's the issue with that? Are we going to keep continuing this? What are we going to do with this park? Is it going to be a true tried and true replacement for the HESPA?
That's an excellent question. I would thank you for expressing that and it saddens me that coming from the student population that you feel that way about park, you're certainly not alone. You know, we will continue conversations here at the board level and I'm pretty sure we'll have some deeper conversations with the State Department, see what route they're going to be taking in the future. So I appreciate your thoughts. Thanks. Okay. All right, so I'm going to be sharing the budget, part two. But before I get up, I want to express the following. So my role as superintendent is to provide as much in-depth information to this board so we can make decisions that are fiscally responsible. Yes? So we want it to be as comprehensive as possible. The intent, and I want to make it very clear, the intent was never to highlight negatively the paraprofessionals. I value the work that paraprofessionals do. I've had a personal relationship and knowing what they do in their classrooms and when, particularly during my time at Irving, and I respect you as professionals. So the intent was never to highlight negatively paraprofessionals. The intent was never to even give you the remotely, the remote indication that we were eliminating paraprofessionals from kindergarten classes. That was not the intent. If it was, you know, personally, then I apologize if you interpret it that way, but that was not the intent. And certainly, the intent was never to eliminate paraprofessionals altogether. The entire intent of the presentation was to provide this board and this community with efficiencies that we need to look at because ultimately, this community is the one that has to bear the expense. So the question is, what are we doing? How are we doing it and can we do it better? If we have 50 parents, do we need all 50? Absolutely. Then it's fine. We have 100 teachers, do we know, do we need all 100? Yes. There we go. See, those are efficiencies. But when you have people that you don't need and then we have to scrounge around to see what responsibilities we can give them, well, that's a problem. But that's not what this is about. It really isn't. So tonight, I want you to know that tonight's budget presentation does not reflect any cuts at all. I want you, I want to be very clear about that. There are no cuts at all, particularly cuts for paraprofessionals. Okay? Thank you.
Any staff.
Or any other staff member.
No staff cuts.
All right. As a matter of fact, we're looking at increasing staff by 15 for next year to create more efficiencies. Okay? All right. Thank you. Okay. Part two, and this is once again tentative school budget, March 9th, this is the second area. So we've had much discussion already. And we, you know, after tonight, we will continue to layer the discussion. And as we move along and we make progress, certainly, we will share it with the community. Let's begin. I'm going to be fairly quickly because the first one was very comprehensive. The, all of the finite details are already online, so you should find it on our website. I believe the school board members, you have the first presentation with all of the finite details, so I'm just going to go over a synopsis. So the summary of increases and decreases, total shortfall preliminary amounts for this particular presentation. So the total of revenues, those are money that we can, coming in, is $242,945. When we compare that to our expenditures of $932,210, we have a budget shortfall as of today of $689,265. Knowing that we have this shortfall, then what are we doing to address that shortfall? So what does that mean? From our, in terms of the revenues, this year, we just received the state aid amount and it was flat. Really no significant increases in state aid nor decreases, so we went flat. The preschool aid was reduced by $43,555 now. That is not to say that that might change. We just have fewer pre-Ks as of now that are being admitted to the schools. All right? So the expenditures required for the budget for charter schools was also reduced by $171,000. All right. Continue. So proposed, proposed budget adjustments. We are proposing, well, I am proposing, the elimination of the assistant superintendent position. That's $145,000. And we express that for a district this size, that's something to think about, do we really need an additional assistant superintendent? The second recommendation is replace the assistant superintendent position with a curriculum and, a curriculum supervisor, a curriculum and instruction supervisor. That should run anywhere from $80,000 to $90,000. When we look at in comparison, then we add another piece to that, which is the community building service. We've been, you know, moving along very nicely this year in terms of community building and we would like to continue that endeavor. That's going to take some money to continue the work that has already started with the community. What is that going to look like? We're not very sure, but we want to allocate some funds because there are a lot of great companies out there, a lot of wonderful programs that are experts at building community. And so that's, we're thinking about another $20,000 for that. Therefore, all in all, saving the district $35,000. Updated budget status. So we have a budget shortfall of $689,000. When we look at the charter schools, the preschool cost, the curriculum, the community building, now we eliminate that, we look at a revised budget shortfall of $486,820. So we're now, we're a little lower. Okay. We're going to go with, I want you to understand the budget and so I don't know if this is the first time that this has been done, but we want to be very clear, we want to be very transparent so you can see where the money is at. All right, so property taxes, all right? If we go with that 2%, that's $464,179. We have got a total budget projection of $23,673,000. Anticipated funds that will be available for us, we're projected at $400,000, which is even. Tuitions and other miscellaneous revenues, $79,000. And I don't want to go through each and every one, but you, but you can see is that our total revenues for this year is once again, $242,945. So we're going back to those revenues. So now when we compare the revenues with the expenditures, we're looking at salaries, increase of salaries by 4.33. And we want to make it very clear, we're not saying that this entire budget was based on the new contract. We're taking the new contract, we're taking the 15 additional positions that we're hiring, all right, for, that we hired already for this particular year, plus the additional positions that we're anticipating for next year. All right? So that includes a 4.33 percent increase. Health benefits has increased also. And that's including not only the new contract, but the 15 positions and future positions. All right? At 11.73 percent. Those are the 15 new and anticipated positions, plus their premiums. Taxes and pensions, all right, we're looking at a decrease of 2.53. Reduced pension and FICA projections for next year. And other benefits, which are projected staff tuition reimbursements, we're looking at, you know, minus 8 percent, 8.07. Let's continue. The charter schools, this year, we have fewer students projected for the state next year. That was a reduction of $171,000. Special ed, out-of-diffic tuitions, that was a reduction also of $57,273. Fewer students projected for next year. And then other tuitions, we have $63,000, we're pretty much flat in that particular area. Educational services, we had a reduction of projected nurses, consultants, the elimination of some cost up, you know, monies that we had for the CBI program. And so that helped us a lot, there's a decrease of $214,000 in terms of the expenditures. District-wide support, $23,000. So we, we had an increase of 48 percent in that particular area that we had to hire substitute staffing costs. Now, by the way, it's not always because staff are absent. It's because this particular year, since we front-loaded a lot of the staff development, we didn't have any other staff development days. And so when we want to provide quality staff development per staff during the daytime, well, they need to be alleviated, right? They, they need to be freed up. Therefore, costing us more money to hire substitute teachers, to free up the teachers for professional development and so forth and so on. All right? Maintenance, the custodial surprise, it was an offset of savings because now a lot of the, the services are being contracted in-house, saving us $28,600 there. District-wide maintenance, there was an add, an increase of $90,000, increasing contracted services, prevailing wages due to work being performed in-house. Transportation, we had a decrease of 792, just fewer kids taking the routes due to fewer students, out-of-district students. Central office, we had an increase of $53,000, increased professional development insurance, legal costs, reduced telephone costs, contract with community building. District-wide administration services, we had a reduction of $3,000. Yes, we saved on the new copy, the leases that we did this year. In terms of Irving, there was an increase of $1,500 for professional development, reclassifying in district levels, same thing with the Bardell, professional development reclassified to building level. And what we mean by that is, we're talking about reclassifying professional development. Yeah, one of the things that we noticed is a lot of the monies were being controlled by the district for professional development. And we felt a little differently and based on the conversations that I had with principals and with teachers, that more of that staff development money should really go to the schools. You know your needs better than anyone else. And so while we might project a certain amount of money district-wide to begin a district-wide initiative, that initiative should continue via in-house professional development based on the true needs of the teachers. Okay? So that would be more money funnel to the schools for professional development. Continued expenditures, middle school, an additional $40,963 to replace textbooks, equipment, the touchstone textbooks that we started this particular year. And if I continue to get positive feedback, we're hoping to continue that program. So we're constantly monitoring that program. It is expensive. So we're going to depend highly on the, not only the feedback from teachers, but also of the children. The high school, that's including the media center, was an additional $44,000, once again, additional textbook, replacement of instruments, replacement of novels and textbooks and the Naviance database system. School-wide instruction, special ed services, we have a reduction of $9,851. So because the large increases in substitute staffing costs offset by the reclassification of technology and the equipment. Core curriculum salaries, $2,000. This is PET band uniforms. Okay. Athletics, an additional $10,546 to replace worn-out uniforms and just small equipment for, I believe was the football team? The football team, okay. Equipment and state debt assessment, $73,000 for technology budget, instructional supplies to equipment. Now, we have the capital budget, capital projects, that's the boiler replacement, that's going to cost us an additional $224,000. Our boiler, this was in high school, the high school boiler is just too old. It really is. And it's become inefficient. And the best way to work around that is, let's get a new boiler, let's begin with more efficiencies. In the long run, you're going to make up that money with, you know, with the monthly bills for the gas and electric. Total expenditures, $699,765. Go to the next slide. So what do we have here now? All right, so I gave you that, a breakdown of all of our expenditures, all of our revenues. So total revenue budget is $28,352,774. The total expenditure, we have that. And so now, the new current shortfall that we have is $486,822. All right? Using the proposed waivers that we have to address those. So here we go. This is the impact. So if we decide to go with the standard 2% cap, well, that would generate $464,000, right? Well, we need more, we really do. All right, so, but if we have the total tax permitted by the waivers, would be an additional, what is it, $486,820. That will address the cap, that will address our shortfall that we have, knowing that additional to the shortfall, there are going to be other expenditures to be expected. All right. So you're looking at 4.10% tax increase for us to address the shortfall. Go to the next one. All right. The next meeting will be held March 23rd. So the board and I and Linda will have additional conversations about this budget. So this concludes this particular time in terms of expressing to you what this budget looks like today and what we're looking for for tomorrow. And once again, I want to reiterate that this budget does not reflect the elimination of any types of positions here in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Soto. Before we move on to other parts of your presentation, I would like to open, open it up for board questions. Are there any questions regarding the budget presentation?
I just have one. The waivers that we would be using, is it leftover from last year and this year's? And so we're using?
Yeah, the, this year, the, the state permits us to exceed the cap because of increased health benefit costs and enrollments. And the amount that they permit us this year is actually more than that amount. So we would actually be using this year's amount first. If we had exceeded that amount, then we would dip into prior waivers that are held for three years.
So we will still have those next year?
Do the waivers expire?
Yeah, they expire in three years, so I believe we'd have two more years that we could use them. But the way that they make you do the calculation is...
They make you use this year first?
Yeah. It doesn't make any sense to me either, but that's the way it is. Yes. So it would be this year's waivers we'd be using for this. And there's still leftover from this year plus last year.
Thank you.
Because I think the presentation from last week said we could, theoretically, we could raise taxes up to, up to not, like a million dollars, over a million more dollars if need, if we chose to. But that's not what we're advocating for.
Good choice.
Are there any other questions?
I had a question, but it's sort of, oh.
No, no, board members first. Sorry.
Okay, awesome. Sorry. But it's sort of a big issue about spending priorities. I don't know if that's, I may sort of feel like we have to talk about it right now because the budget's going in, but it's a larger conversation. Should I go ahead and?
Absolutely. This is, this is your one time that board members get a chance to shape our agenda for the year, pretty much.
If I may interrupt?
Yeah.
This is a tentative budget.
Yeah.
Presentation. There's still six more weeks of discussion time. It's not the last chance. The final budget won't be voted on until April...
9th, I believe?
No. 20th, April 20th?
Yeah. 20th, okay.
Second. Two more meetings, right?
Thank you for clearing that up. Yes, you asked.
Okay, well, I'm happy to move the discussion to, you know, the next meeting or whatever, but I'll, I'll put it out there.
Yeah.
I have concerns about the lack of reading support at Irving and Bardell. I've heard for years that there are issues with the transition from Bardell to middle school. That, you know, sometimes students, for whatever reason, I know we have excellent, excellent teachers at Bardell, but for whatever reason, sometimes kids come into the middle school not with the literacy skills they need. And I know you already know this, I was looking at the NJASK scores and as we've discussed, there was a precipitous decline, especially in the fifth grade. Well, maybe not especially, the fifth grade scores have just really shot down. And, I mean, for me, I would like to see in this budget, I would like to see something addressed, I would like to see additional reading support. I don't know if that would be a reading specialist, I don't know if that would be a literacy coach, that, you know, it's not my area of expertise. But I think that's a problem that we absolutely have to address. And honestly, for me, that's something I would want to address before we, you know, spend $20,000 for community engagement, as much as I do like the community and honor the community. You know, literacy is a much higher priority for me. I don't know how others feel. It's, it seems to me it's probably more important than a GNT program to make sure that kids coming into sixth grade are not reading at a second grade level. That is really critical. So I say this, I say this as someone whose kid is in the GNT program, and I very much like Ms. Amsterdam, so I mean no personal offense to her. But this seems urgent.
And also to follow up and agree, I don't know what Ms. Amsterdam's qualifications are as far as her...
Let's, we, okay, hold on. We cannot talk about teachers at this level.
No, I wasn't about to.
You're mentioning teachers by name. We cannot do that at the board.
Okay, she's the only GNT teacher. So I apologize for that, but it's, it's hard to talk about this without knowing what we're talking about. It's a small district. I'm just asking if there is a way to utilize what, you know, qualifications, you know, a certain teacher has in that same vein. I mean, this is a situation where she might have reading specialist qualifications and I don't know if that is true. But I also share Ann's concern with the lack of reading support at Bardell especially because even if a teacher does recognize that there is an issue, there may not be dedicated time available to address those issues. So I think a dedicated staff member to reading is necessary and, you know, on your first presentation, Mr. Soto, I noticed on, I think it's page nine, that there are... presentation, Mr. Soto, I noticed on, I think it's page nine, that there are unbudgeted positions that we are allotting for. And so I wasn't too clear about how many we currently have and what you're proposing, so I just wanted to ask you if we could clarify how many social workers and speech therapists we have on staff currently for each building or, you know, district-wide. I don't know what your...
Yeah, it would be helpful if we could have these types of questions in advance. I don't know if Mr. Soto has that information.
We currently have one social worker. I have downed that she's in the middle school, but she probably floats around a little bit.
Sure.
And the other one, what was the other position?
Speech therapists.
We have a one full-time speech therapist and two part-time, six, three-fifths speech therapists.
That was one full-time and two...
Two part-time. I believe in the, in the budget, there's a proposal to increase those two part-timers to full-time status.
Great. Okay.
Do we have a list of all of the positions that we're considering adding?
That was in the last budget presentation.
That was in the last one, the full list is there?
I think it's page nine?
I'm sorry.
On the last one, they don't, they're not page numbered. That's okay. If you count, you get there eventually.
If I may respond to your notation about unbudgeted, that was a health benefits contingency? That wasn't a contingency for salaries?
For salaries, okay, gotcha. So my other question about that was, you know, back to the, what I kind of see is an umbrella-type position of a SAC counselor. I don't know how that compares with two social workers or three social workers, I'm sure, I don't know, but I would like to know.
For what, what grade level for SAC counselor? An overall district?
Overall district, if that's possible, but I would think more of the middle school and the high school.
Okay. Don't we meet a number of these services through the teen center?
Teen center. Yes. I think something might be, oh, I apologize, go ahead.
No, no, we do.
Because we do not have a SAC counselor, much of the need is being funneled through
the teen center. You know, they have their counselors, we have in-house counselors in the high school, and they have a thorough program. We have interns that are coming in that are studying exactly that, that they're helping. To my point of view, I don't think we've had a great need. From time to time, we might have a situation that we might have to seek elsewhere, but, I mean, certainly, I don't really think there is a need for a SAC counselor per se, an immediate need. I might be wrong, and I'll take a second look at it. I want to address a little bit the reading specialist. While I agree with you, we might need a reading specialist, we're looking at, I'm having conversations with several staff members, including Bel Shlala, in improving our efficiencies to see if part of that, we can at least render some type of skills facilitator, particularly at Irving and Bartle. I'll tell you, there's another need that I would like, and I haven't really spoken about this, is I believe Bartle would, would probably benefit from some type of quasi-dean position to alleviate the teachers and the principal in handling just a lot of situations that have emerged this particular year. So I think they would be more than happy and grateful if we will provide that type of support to the Bartle school.
Well, that's a model that we've had before in this district. It has been a stipend position for a dean at different, at different institutions, and it has worked in terms of curbing discipline and a number of, I guess, counseling issues as well.
And the last item that you had mentioned about the GNT program, I'm already having conversations about what does that GNT actually look like today, now?
Sure.
All right, and how can we improve efficiencies in that particular area? And how can we expand the program so all of our students can receive the same benefits of that GNT program? So we're currently having conversations about what that should look like for next year.
I think that's wonderful. In terms of the, the skills facilitator at Bartle and Irving, would that be sort of a, a part-time thing that one of the teachers did, or would that be a new hire?
No, no, I don't think it would require a new hire.
Yeah. Would that be sufficient? I mean, I'm hearing just from friends and people around, you know, on the pickup line, that there are really serious problems that would probably merit, you know, one-on-one attention on a weekly basis.
And that's something that we're currently looking at also.
Okay.
We've already had conversations about that.
So there's a staff...
I haven't mentioned anything because I want to make sure that we iron out all the details.
So there's a, there are our staff members of some sort who would be available to give sort of intensive coaching on reading?
That's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
We are.
Are there any other board members with questions?
Yes, you said that we had the higher substitute staffing costs related to the professional development.
Yep.
Now, is there a way to mitigate that looking forward for next year?
Yes, there is a way. In fact, because all of the professional development was front-loaded this year, for next year, we have four additional professional development half-days.
Okay, so but that's still...
And that should take care of that.
That's still an additional increase next year?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, okay. But it's...
For professional, so rather than front-loading all the professional development and then not having enough days, now we have four additional half-days for professional development, therefore not necessitating, you know, hiring substitute teachers.
May I interject? It also is to compensate for shortfalls in the current year. We're not actually projecting an increase over what we're already spending. This is really based upon current year's spending, and it's not even up to what we're currently spending.
So in addition, I don't want to make it seem like that the expenditure was based just on professional development. We also had a number of, of teachers, and we're very happy about that, that are expecting, and we had to hire subs, so that's all good. Thanks.
And then quickly on the maintenance, custodial, and landscaping.
Yep.
Even though those are increases for in-house services, things are being done in-house, it's still a cost savings against outsourcing, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
How does that work? I mean, I, what I have is that the contract, one of the maintenance contracts went up a hundred thousand dollars, and we're also paying for fifty thousand dollars worth of supplies that were previously covered by the contract. So, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just having trouble following it. What are we...
Linda.
Where's the gain?
Okay, well, no, no, there was a contract for a service, a budget item for a service contract for heating, ventilation, air conditioning services, maintenance and annual repairs and inspections of that system. And it, our current maintenance staff has certified that they can do that work in-house and save us twenty thousand dollars. Now, of course, that would incur some of their labor costs, that's a prevailing wage. So our prevailing wage would go up by five, but we're saving twenty. Now, the, the big-ticket item, though, is the actual contract, the annual contract for the custodial staff, maintenance staff, landscaping staff, they're just being here and doing their work.
Right.
And when we had to go out for a new contract, the proposals that came back were significantly higher than we had even budgeted, and we had budgeted an eighteen percent increase, knowing that there were very significant increases in a contract that they had with a local for increasing costs for staffing and health, salaries and health benefits. And so the proposals we received were about seventy thousand higher than what we had budgeted. And because of the type of contracted, competitive contracting that we went through, the contract could no longer include the cost of custodial supplies.
Oh, I see.
So that was on top of that. So in addition to the anticipated eighteen percent increase in contract, that was higher, plus we had to pay for our own custodial supplies. So it's a bit of a double whammy.
I see. So this was the contract that was available to us this year?
Yes.
After a competitive bidding?
Right.
RFPs or...
Right.
Is it a bidding process? How does...
Well, we were able to request from the, I want to say DCA, Division of Purchase and, I can't remember which one.
Whatever they are, yeah.
I think it's DCA, to go the route of competitive contracting, which is RFP, as opposed to the bidding process, which gives us a little bit more flexibility in the evaluation process.
Right, okay. Is there any, I mean, I feel silly asking this because obviously you've been engaged in this for many months. Is there just no room to move anywhere with this custodial, this custodial slash maintenance?
We're lucky with this number.
Are we lucky with this number?
I would think...
Yeah, the only option is to reduce the staff and have dirtier buildings.
Oy, okay, wow. Thank you very much for explaining that, I appreciate it.
This is another silly follow-up question. A couple of parents had talked to me personally about doing any of those things on our own, not through the PTO or, like, a parent organization that would be volunteer-led for...
To do what?
For outdoor maintenance.
No.
There's liability issues.
That's what I had assumed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they ran a lawnmower and then broke...
God forbid.
Cut their leg open, we're liable.
Right.
And they aren't necessarily trained the way that our, the contracted staff are trained.
Yeah, I just felt the need to bring that up.
Absolutely.
It's, it's obviously beneficial to explore all options.
Yeah, absolutely.
I had a question about the CBI program. On the third page of the budget expenditure summary, where we are showing like our pretty much biggest decrease, one of the items under various eliminates startup costs for CBI program. Is this a program we're discontinuing?
No, 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 the startup was a first-year...
Ah, 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 okay.
Program to, to get the program started. Now we're moving with it.
Okay.
It's just that upfront startup, we don't, we only needed the one year.
Okay, fabulous. And then just a smaller ticket item. Mr. Soto, you had said that the Touchstones textbooks were, they're a significant expense this year, fourteen thousand dollars, but that's, and that's all under the middle school? I thought that was spread out over grades, though. Is there, is it...
I think third, sixth, and eighth.
And eighth, right. And then the idea was to expand that to additional grades, is that, so is this the expansion for next year, or is this...
I believe it reflects the expansion for next year.
I'm sorry, I was writing...
The Touchstone.
Yes, yes, it's an expansion.
Okay, and so how many additional grades are we adding for next year?
I think we're adding three additional grades.
Yeah.
And is it all middles? That doesn't work promise?
No, 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 then it'll be fourth grade, fifth grade, and ninth grade.
Okay, and if I recall, was all of the startup cost for that through HPEF, or was it a shared thing?
No, it was a shared, it was shared.
Have we, has that gone back to, do we know if part of that's gone back to HPEF?
Probably will. Absolutely.
HPEF is, by the, but just FYI, HPEF likes to fund seed money projects.
Gotcha. So in terms of maintenance, would throw it back to the district, so we're, okay.
Yep.
And do we have any kind of feedback from teachers? Do they have time for this, considering, you know, the, the new exam this year and everything that was happening new this year concerning the park? Are they making time for this? Are they able to get to the Touchstones program? Is it something that they are being asked, you know, for their feedback?
To my knowledge, absolutely. They have time, it's, it's being done, it's being done effectively. I've visited, I visited one particular classroom, I was very impressed with the level of engagement that the students had, and certainly this is true across the board. Certainly, this is something we're going to consider to expand for next year. I'm planning a mid-year conversation with the teachers to see where we're at, but in addition to the teachers, I'm very interested to see what the kids are saying about it.
Yeah, sure. And if, if we ever are looking to mitigate smaller expenditure, I mean, it's a large expenditure, but smaller, large expenditures along those lines, I mean, I've, I've mentioned this multiple times from the board table, a program that I would like to take, us to take a look at in terms of cost savings is Study Island, and get that input from teachers and from students. What I've seen personally of it is not terribly impressive. I don't know that students are, you know, particularly excited about the, about the program. You know, if there is some other way that the district could look towards doing benchmarking and, you know, save ourselves a nice little chunk of change there.
Well, we're, we're well down that path. I believe Brian and Jen Knapp went to a conference over the last week to look at new programs to replace Study Island. So they will be reporting out to Mr. Soto in the next month or so to see where we are in terms of...
To replace, for what end? I mean, as far as, when we approved Study Island last year, it was for park prep basically and benchmarking, looking for something similar along those lines, or, I mean, the whole, the selling point of park is supposedly that there shouldn't need to be any prep, but the prep is that you have a rich curriculum and that that prepares students for the exam. So what, I mean, we had teachers last year write lots of benchmarks. I mean, my question is, why aren't we using those benchmarks that have already been created and saving ourselves that fourteen thousand dollars in Study Island?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, today I met with Jen Knapp and we discussed the benchmarks that had already been written. The challenge there was there were so many, but we're going to meet with the teachers to select those few that are really on target. And so part of that, the reconsideration of the, the benchmarking, we're leaning towards the benchmarks that were already written by teachers. Once again, Jen Knapp is doing additional research to see what's out there that's better than Study Island. She's going to, they're going to present it to the principals, hopefully at our next meeting, and from there, if the principals, you know, like what they see, like what they hear, we're going to present it to the staff and look at it a little more deeper.
Sounds good.
Okay. I want to, I want to address, I know you had, you wanted an update where we're at with the website. So right now, we have the color scheme, we have the backgrounds, we've had much discussion about the mascots. Right now, I believe Sharp School, they're currently working on migrating all of the information from our current website to the new website. They should be finishing very soon. The next step that the team is working on is all of the tabs, they're working on the tabs. And that's where we're at at this point.
Like the tabs and the features?
The features and all that tab, okay. We're still striving for mid, mid-April.
Could I ask a question, a question about the budget aspect of that?
Yeah.
I mean, my understanding is that the new website will cost some seven thousand dollars as a startup cost and approximately six thousand dollars thereafter per year. And I'm wondering what kind of an increase that is over our current website? Is it, is our current website cost us zero because some poor staff member is, no?
No.
Okay. So what kind of an increase are we looking at?
We're looking at about a four-thousand-dollar increase. However, the, we're paying right now about approximately, I don't have the accurate numbers, but approximately a thousand five hundred dollars for our current website, which doesn't have a lot of features.
Oh, I know.
We're also paying an additional three thousand, approximately, for Honeywell, which is not being used to its fullest capacity. Within a year, we're hoping that Sharp School will have the capabilities that Honeywell has, therefore actually saving us money.
That would be an increase in the Sharp School contract amount, probably. So it would be more than seven, more than six thousand dollars.
Well, you know that everything is negotiable.
Oh, yeah. You didn't look at something for free? That'd be nice. You never know.
You never know. Free, I don't know, but...
We've already signed a six-thousand-dollar contract. I would think that they would not be willing to give us a whole lot of new features. I mean, I know the need for a new website. I love the web, I'm a tech, you know, technophile or whatever, but it just seems like an awful lot of money when we have these other serious educational deficits going on. So I'm, I'm concerned.
I think it's a good, I think, I really do think it's a good investment for our future. It's going to provide a number of opportunities for enhanced collaboration between our community and our students and staff. I think this is money that's going to be well-spent and will show dividends throughout in terms of educational opportunities.
I absolutely agree. I just think that if we have a limited budget and we had to have a list of priorities, my priority, as I said, would be, a reading specialist, would be additionally counseling support, or dean support, or vice principal support at Bartle. I mean, if we have to make a choice, then for me, the website goes. I mean, I respect the incredible amount of work that's gone into it, and it just looks beautiful, but if we have to choose between these things, you know...
I mean, okay.
I don't even know where the website fits in the budget. I don't think you went down to that level of detail.
I think, I think the budget was accepted already.
The website was already voted, I mean, we're, we're, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, I thought we were still...
It came out of this year's budget, actually.
Okay, I thought we hadn't voted on the contract with Sharp Schools yet?
I believe that we actually did.
We accepted it, like, I think January, June, the...
The day of the presentation.
Right. And it came out of this year's budget.
I see. Okay.
So we, new board members voted on that website? Because I don't recall.
I don't recall that either. Maybe.
The day they made the presentation, there was a motion to go forward with them and the district has been moving forward to create the website.
I don't remember that.
No, I have no memory of that exact detail.
Remember, we talked to Chris afterwards as if it was still yet to be approved. We had a, you know, just going out the door conversation, you know, hey, what about that website? And my impression was that we had not, there was still something the board needed to vote on. Well, I guess we can, we could go to the video. I hate to do that.
Yeah, and I also kind of, I'm confused about the presentation. Because the presentation did offer the, whatever it's called, I guess, the substitute to Honeywell, whatever that feature was, that was included in the presentation as if that was what, you know, the $5,000 paid for.
No, it wasn't.
It was approved on January 20th, item 17 on the agenda in under finance and facilities.
Okay. Well, that was definitely not fleshed out and I was very unaware of that, pretty disappointed about that.
It was in your agenda. The information was in all of our.
I didn't recall voting to approve this particular contract with Sharp Schools. I mean, I'm sure Linda is correct. I will look just to satisfy my own neurotic self.
It's in the minutes.
I'm sure, I know, she's reading for the minutes. I agree. I don't want to have a.
It's on the main agenda.
And I also don't call an RFP being put forth.
Right, we talked about how there are.
We don't review RFPs as board members.
But I thought they were still under review.
If I may interject, professional services don't always require an RFP, especially if they are unique and it's hard to say this website is exactly the same as that website or it would give you exactly what you wanted. And I believe that a number of different hosts were evaluated. There was an evaluation process.
That we were not aware of.
Well, that would be.
I believe that was part of the presentation.
Yeah, we wouldn't be aware of it. It would have taken place in the central office.
So then I guess I'm confused about why we were given a presentation at all.
Just informational.
They were showing you the website that they had decided was the one that they felt meant.
And you had a chance to vote down the motion as well. You, we were.
I guess being, I think that might have been our first meeting.
It was January 20th.
It was your second.
Okay, so second, so.
That was a mistake on my part. I see the minutes and I know Linda just read them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions on the website or budget? Yes, absolutely.
So on the, on the athletics section, I believe there's a $10,000 increase in, in budget for the next year.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's a lot of money and I was just wondering, is that only for the football team and if, what, what other equipment is it gonna be like used for?
Well, there are uniforms that need to be replaced for other sports. The football team needs to get new, a lot of new helmets. That's an ongoing thing, but I believe that they have a lot that they.
And we rotate from year to year on where the money should be spent on arts and athletics in terms of a rotation between the, the athletic director in determining where the, where money needs to be spent for that, for that particular year.
And his budget's been flat for many years and he hasn't been able to replace certain things that should be probably on a rotational replacement basis.
And I think, I think last year was baseball. I think we spent a good amount of money on.
Actually, I think, I don't know. I think Linda's right. I don't think that athletics would have gotten anything.
Not an increase, but I'm just, in terms of what the priorities were for the particular year.
A lot of times, we just have to find money outside of our normal budget because they're in such dire need.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
The health benefits, I just wanted to ask a question about that because it appears that we're paying more for health benefits out of pocket, but I'm not sure how much staff is putting in to the end.
They're on level three.
That was in the last budget presentation.
So have they, their, their input has increased as well?
Yes, yes. They're still on a, they're on a four-year phase in of increasing contributions. They will be going into year three. So they're going from a 50% to a 75% of the full ending contribution that they will be required to make.
And that's a state mandate. That has nothing to do with us.
We love those. And there's also a 2.5 salary increase, so I'm just imagining that some of them are actually making less money.
Me too. That's the reality. That's the reality.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I am purposefully highlighting that because I know that that looks like plus 11.73 and wow, we need to, you know, stop the bleeding, but I just feel like that's important for us to know that this is a shared sacrifice more on the teachers' and staff side than.
This is after the contribution by, it would be that much more if this, the staff were not making that increased contribution. The estimated increase is an 11% premium increase. We have 15 additional staff members. And then we netted that against the increase in the employee contributions and came up with about 11 point something percent, I believe it was.
And the salary is also a negotiated item, which we both, both sides agree on it, so.
It's good for the public to know, in case the public didn't know that, you know, all sides were making concessions here or we're, we're experiencing a financial loss because of the health stuff.
Right.
That's something I did not understand as a member of the public.
Exactly.
Might be good to just highlight that, I guess.
I think it's necessary to highlight that. I think that it's a really underappreciated point.
And along those lines, the other point that I would like to make that I've made several times from the board table, but I'll make again for the benefit of everyone in the audience and anyone who's watching at home, the reason we continue to see these increases and the reason we continue to see tax increases above 2% caps is, as you saw in this, state funding once again, flat. And beyond state funding being flat, if you look at our state funding over the last five to six years, we're talking a decrease in overall state funding of almost $5 million for our district. If we were to plug that $5 million back into this district, we'd be looking at a much, much different budget, much, much different services to our students. The numbers for the last two years aren't even in. It's actually the Education Law Center that, we're very fortunate, goes and looks at these figures, looks at what the School Funding Reform Act actually mandates that the state provide districts versus what the state actually does go ahead and provide districts. And the difference is substantial. So hopefully in the next month or so, they'll be coming up with those figures for this year and last year and we'll get an even fuller sense of exactly how underfunded the district is by the state. And this is where I encourage my, my fellow board members and other board members across the state to join together to, you know, push back on this a little bit at the state level and to let, let the governor and the legislature know that this, the impact that this has on, on individual districts like ours.
Right. Thank you.
To that end, just one more addition. I ran across an article today that was just released and it was from NewJersey.com, so anyone can go check this out, but the headline is Park Testing Will Cost New Jersey $22.1 Million Just This Year, State Officials Estimate. So when we talk about the park and we talk about the park and we talk about the park and I maybe sound a bit obsessed, this is why. $22.1 million for one year of administration of a test that will not count.
Okay. Can I, is there any other comments on the, on the budget?
Thank you for a very clear presentation. That was, even I could follow it. Thank you.
Yes. Linda, I wanna reiterate that. Linda, you did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Soto, as well. You both did a great job. I wanna thank you both for this. I also want to talk about one piece of news that we received over the last two weeks. Mr. Soto has decided to retire at the end of his contract. I wanna thank him very much for all of his service to this board, to this community and to the students. We are going to be embarking on a search for a new superintendent. There will be information discussed in the Finance and Facilities Committee tonight to approve a RFP for a search committee, a search, a search consultant to help us with the vetting process, with help, to help us with transparency during the process and to help the board advertise the position. We will be filling in the community more as we get more information, but I wanted to assure the community that we will have, hopefully, some cohesion throughout the process and from Mr. Soto to the next hopeful, hopeful superintendent of our school district. So again, I wanna thank you again for everything and I look forward to the coming months and the training of your skills to the new superintendent as well.
Thank you, Adam. I just wanted to assure the, the community while I will be retiring, you know, greener pastures, I will be fully committed to, to this district. I've been fully committed since my arrival here. I've come to love this community. I understand this community. And so rest assured that I will never, what was the, the comment that was made? Check out. I'm not a, I'm not a checking out kinda man. So while I'm here, I'm going to work my tail off. I wanna make sure that we begin the new school year in September the way you should. I'm here to support the teachers, support, you know, this community, but most importantly, do whatever's necessary to render to our students an excellent and superlative education. So while I'm here, that's going to be my job. I've also expressed that if need be, I will continue to work until further notice to ensure that this transition is smooth and that we begin the school year with our two feet firmly on the ground. So I wanna thank you for having me and it's been an honor to serve you, the community and, and the children we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Is there any other superintendent report? Michelle, can we have the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report, please?
Sure. We met tonight and we discussed three things. Those were Study Island, Chromebook purchases and, you know, a list of Chromebooks that we have, and then the Read 180 program. So the Read 180 program is a research-based reading intervention program for struggling students, which we currently use in grade six to 12. During a Read 180 class, the students participate in a whole group instruction. Then students break into three small groups. The teacher facilitates one small group with the two other working groups, working independently in instructional software and modeled and independent reading. The class ends with a whole group wrap-up session. Groups are flexible and change based on assessment data. And I think that the feedback from the staff is that the Read 180 program is working and that everyone is happy with that. The Study Island theme, we discussed alternatives to Study Island, as Mr. Soto mentioned, and the feedback, as Darcy had asked, mixed reviews on the Study Island program. So it says here that Study Island is used in the classroom to support instruction, although it also is used for benchmarking. It can be used for quizzes on topics teachers have previously covered or given as a pre-test for upcoming topics. And teachers have immediate access to data through various reports to inform instruction. Again, mixed reviews and I think that this Study Island program is up for review and as Mr. Soto mentioned, Jen Knapp is looking into alternatives. The Chromebooks that we currently have in the district are a total of 575. We have 1,618 students in the district. And so the Chromebook breakdown per school is as follows. Irving, 32 Chromebooks. Bartle, 206. The middle school, 165. And the high school, 172. And there was some discussion about ways that we use technology and what our goals are in the future. So I think that that is a continued, continued discussion. And I know that we have, we have homes in our district that are, you know, completely technology-free for probably, for financial reasons, so it is a priority that we provide children with technology. To what end? That's where the discussion kind of left off and we're still discussing.
Any comments?
I just have, just out of curiosity, as I know, I mean, it would be great to have enough Chromebooks for, for all the, the students in every school, but just when, the way they're broken down, it looks like, I mean, Bartle has a lot more than the middle school and the high school.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, is that because the older the kids get, a lot of them bring their own technology or, it just almost seems like it should be increased the older the kids get?
That was exactly my question during the committee meeting. I couldn't figure out why that would be because it seems to me that the high school students would have more of a need for a Chromebook than a Bartle student.
Well, we do have the bring your own technology policy in the high school, which.
That does not imply in Bartle.
Yeah, it does not imply, yeah, yeah.
I mean, not that, like I said, they all deserve, but just, you know.
No, I don't, the answer is, I don't know the answer to that, but I can think of one rationale being, we do have the, we do have the bring your own policy and I know a number of students do bring their own technology. I mean, this board, I think, needs to commit more towards technology in the future. I think digitization is happening all around us. The top 10 jobs of 2010 were not jobs in 2000. We really need to focus on the students in this district and the jobs that they're gonna have when they graduate. It's just truly amazing that we're still fighting over Chromebooks when digits, when everything, when this world is, is happening at a rapid pace. You have CEOs and government officials of the world having oh shit moments every day because they don't understand the, the world that we're living in.
And you think they're using Chromebooks? And you think they're using Chromebooks?
I think they're, I think, I think they're using, the technology, I think they're using the technology that they can afford. And we need to, we can afford this technology or we can afford it in bits and drabs, but we need to enhance our technology education to our students. We are not doing a good enough job. And if you wanna talk about charter schools, that is how they're gonna beat us.
Well, I don't think anyone was fighting about Chromebooks. I just wanna clarify, we were fighting about having a plan.
Yeah.
And not making purchases when we don't have a plan for how they're gonna be used instructionally.
We do have a plan.
Okay.
And we've talked about this plan over and over and I don't understand why you keep saying we don't have a plan.
I do have the overall technology plan. There was never specifics in terms of how they were gonna be used in the classrooms. I mean, those kinds of plans.
We provide our, we provide our teachers with professional development. They have a number of hours that they, of their own, that they can provide, that they can go to professional development on their, on their own. We have the prescribed professional development and the professional development in their contract. We have a number of opportunities for enhancement of the, of the educational opportunities through technology and the education that's needed for the staff and for the students. You know, we have an op, we have the, we just need to provide them with the tools to be able to do that. So, okay.
I, I think that what we mean when we say a plan is not necessarily a purchasing plan. It's a curricular plan that is developmentally appropriate for each grade level. And that is completely unclear as of right now.
Okay. I know there's been much discussion about a plan. Brian and I, we've, we've sat down and rewriting the technology plan for the next three years going up to 2019. When we're ready, we're gonna share that plan. But most importantly, I think what it still lacks is the intricacy as it relates to each grade level. So what's the plan per grade level?
Exactly.
How are the kids going to use it? When are they going to use it? What programs are they gonna use? When using it?
And to what end?
I'm very cognizant of that.
Yes.
And that's a deeper conversation.
Perfect.
But we've already started the preliminary plan going towards the year 19, 2019.
From 2016 to 2019. That's right, three-year plan.
We appreciate the deeper conversation.
Yes, absolutely. It's necessary.
Brian knows.
And I know this was brought up in the curriculum committee meeting, but I think that, from what I understand, there's some talk of a townwide Wi-Fi. I don't know where we are with that, but I do think that it's important to think about when we're talking about technology, not just providing technology in the building, but thinking about what these children go home to at night. Some can do homework and print things out and some cannot. So these are just, you know, very detail-oriented issues, but we have not really fleshed that out. And I think that when we're talking about providing technology, we need to be cognizant of how it's being used and who has what. You know, bring your own technology plan. It seems great and I really do appreciate how much it saves us in, in dollars, but I think that it is in essence unfair in a lot of different ways because I think there is a tremendous technology gap that cannot be addressed with a Chromebook. Especially when the Chromebook is being used for park testing almost two months out of the school year. So it's really difficult to say that we're meeting the needs of technology and I think we all agree with you that, you know, we're lacking in that area, but I think that you cannot just run full speed ahead. I think that you need to think about where you intend to go.
Trust me, we are not running anywhere. We are not even close to walking.
Well.
So.
When we're spending lots of money on things that we don't have money to spend on and we're not getting the value.
What money don't we have to spend? What are we spending that we don't have money to spend on?
Well, I think, I think we're talking about a one-to-one technology plan, meaning a Chromebook for each student, so is that really something that is the best plan?
Who is mentioning a, who is mentioning a one-to-one technology program?
I think you mentioned in the curriculum committee meeting.
It is absolutely the right pro, plan, but no, nobody here is acknowledging that we have the money to do that in the next five, five years. We should be working towards a one-to-one program. I think every school district in this state is working towards a one-to-one program. If you think a child is going to write a paper by hand ever again in their, in their career, it's just not going to happen. We need to be, we need to be teaching students how to use computer, how to use digital technology at an early age and to continue it throughout, and to continue it out there, throughout their, their, their lifetime.
I don't think anyone is devaluing the importance of technology, but I think we're undervaluing the importance of things like handwriting and, you know...
It's just not going to happen, though. You're, you're not in, the world that you're living in, the world that you think you're living in is not the world that we're, that we are living in.
I may be living in a different world than you, though, Adam. I mean, my world is not so focused on technology. I totally understand my prep, law practice is completely digitized. I don't do anything on paper, but I mean, there are, my world is not all about technology. I feel like we're, I, I, we can...
I mean, every, I believe every company today is a technology company. They all have a number of technology that they need to buy, they need to, they need to support, and they need to, to work towards, because they find those efficiencies and they realize their technology is working towards their...
Well, let's just say that the state's, um, um, funding should keep up with their demand.
Yes, yeah.
Would we get $10 in park readiness aid per student?
Really?
If the dis, if the state wants us to digitize instruction...
But this is not about parks.
But it is.
It's not about parks, that's the thing.
Well, wait, hold on.
It's not about parks.
Excuse me, if you'd let me finish a sentence.
You can go on.
If they would like us to digitize instruction, digitize testing, digitize all these things, then the state also needs to put the funding behind their own initiatives. That's what I'm saying.
That is agreed.
I'm not saying that our, our Chromebooks were only purchased for parks. I'm not trying to wade into that debate again. I'm just saying, if this is the wave of the future and this is what we mean by college and career readiness, then the state also has to put them, their money where they're at.
That is agreed, but it's not about parks, it's not about a test, it's about what society looks like in five, 10 years. If you have a kindergarten or today, what is the world that they're getting into? It's not, it's not the world that we see today.
I just want to say something, as, as an educator, when you teach a child...
I'm still not seeing kindergarten for a Chromebook.
When you teach a child to write, when they are small and they're learning how to do handwriting, you're not teaching them an antiquated skill, you're actually teaching them fine motor skills.
I understand.
But you're not understanding.
No, I know, I, don't say I'm not understanding, I understand.
It's far more important for them to learn handwriting and fine motor skills than it is for them to learn typing.
But that...
And that's a real point. That's not just, we don't understand the world that we're living in.
No, and I, and I understand that point, and I think that is, that should be part of the curriculum, but the wor, the world that we are living in is not going to, is not only going to be defined by that one thing, it's also going to be defined by this. It's not only writing.
I absolutely agree, but I think that you are, might be a little off balance with your focus on technology. I agree that there is, you know, an important world, you know, out there full of technology that the kids need to be ready for. How to make them prepared for that world is what we're kind of disagreeing on, because I do think that there, I mean, human neurology has not changed that much, even though we are now working towards a digitized society. We still need to develop as human beings, and so technology cannot answer a lot of these questions. And I would absolutely make the argument that kids are going to pick up these things like typing and all kinds of other technological skills a lot faster than you give them credit for. But they need time, especially in their younger years, to develop, you know, regular, regular natural skills without the aid of technology, because it does become a crutch, and they lack the important communication skills, the social skills, the handwriting skills. I mean, so many things need to develop at that time, and they have nothing to do with technology. So, you know...
At the high school level, at the high school level, at the middle school level, I see
that being a much more necessary area for us to address, but I think we need to really think about this when we're talking about primary school.
So if you look at technology in primary school, if you look at, uh, programs such as Minecraft, Minecraft teaches students how to have governance models. They teach about how to, if you, if a student had, if the student has a, they build, apparently they build these towns within Minecraft.
I'm very, very familiar with Minecraft.
A student, one stu, one...
SimCity is better for that.
One, one student goes into another student's town, blows it up. It, it has a conversation about governments. Why did you feel, why did you feel this way? Why did you feel that this was a bad thing? What should be the repercussions for something like that? Digitization can be an asset and an aid to providing real-world solutions to the...
Those are very, very important words that you used, an asset and an aid. Those are tools, those words are tools, those are not the end result.
If someone's kid plays Minecraft pretty much all day, there's not a whole lot of governance action. It could be used in a governance class, it could be used in a government class, but it's not.
But it's not, and it needs, and it is in many districts. And if you look at Microsoft, if you look...
Unless we're starting to test on the state level for governance...
It's not about tests, it's about, it's about the conversations you have. A governance conversation in a third grade about why this is bad and why this is good is a good conversation for a third grader to have.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I do agree, I think we agree. But I think that when you talk about, you know, the focus of our curriculum, it does have a lot to do with what's being tested. We're, we're cutting out lots of different things to make time for things that are tested subjects, so...
Okay.
I think it is part of the conversation.
I am sorry that I'm, but, but this is why, right? We need a very comprehensive, uh, technology plan. Uh, we need to have conversations with those, uh, people that are going to be using it and those other teachers, and we need to come up with a plan that's scaffolded. So technology may look different for early childhood, because it is different in early childhood grades. That's a conversation with the teachers, you know, with the kids, and how can we develop a comprehensive technology plan that's scaffolded, that's responsible, and is going to work? Not because it looks nice, but it, it, it's actually going to work and it's needed. So part of that plan is identifying the need, identifying how we're going to train the teachers to, uh, for this technology to be used effectively. How can we incorporate that technology in our curriculum, right? How do we scaffold it? And so on and so on. So that's, that's the deep conversation that I just spoke about, that Brian and I have just initiated, and then we're going to open it up for, for teachers to give us input, how to move forward.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Will the, will the proposed plan also, um, encounter and contemplate the funding plan for it also? Right now, I think our budget has about $150,000 just in components and maintenance, and I think our current tech plan budget's about $25,000 for that, and we're looking at $150,000 right now.
That's right. So it's going to... You're absolutely correct, yes.
Is there any other comments? Uh, finance and facilities?
The finance committee did meet tonight. Uh, I want to draw your attention to item five, donated banners. I mentioned this at the last meeting. We're grateful to On Point Printing for donating, uh, banners to the, uh, PAT, um, that is probably, uh, worth about $2,500. Item six, uh, has to do with the boiler replacement that we mentioned. Uh, we need to, um, get the design work going. Uh, so, uh, then, then the, uh, item seven refers to the long-range facilities plan. We're also, uh, using our architects for that. Um, and item eight is the demographic study, which is, is being done in relation to the long-range facilities plan. And item 14, uh, as mentioned previously, is for the superintendent of schools search consultant. Thank you.
Is there any comments?
Um, actually, Linda, I did have a question that I didn't ask in committee. How long do we, um, think that the request or proposals for the demographic study will take?
Uh, probably about a month, the process. Uh, we have to advertise, and I think there's a 20-day, um, time period to receive the proposals. I'm not quite ready to get the advertisement out, I don't have the specific specs totally finished. We got it out. It's probably going to be, um, my goal would be to have it approved at the April 20th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I got a question?
Yep.
Um, so for this, so for the boiler, um, I see that, how much it costs, but how much, how much, like, will it save per year? I think that's, is that, and that's something that we have or no?
That's difficult to answer.
It almost doesn't matter.
The purpose of the boiler replacement is to prevent it from failing in the middle of winter. It's not, I know, the priority is because it's old and it needs to be repaired frequently, and there have been times when it has failed and we were just lucky to have a backup boiler. But the backup boiler is also getting old, so we can't rely on the backup boiler. We have to have a good primary boiler. And the fact that it's, uh, I don't know, 50 years old or so, it is inherently an energy hog, so we don't have numbers at this point. Once the, um, engineering, uh, work is done and the specifications are done, our architect and engineer probably would have a, a fairly good idea as to the annual savings, um, in our heating costs. And, um, then we'd be able to probably put that into the 16, 17 budget as a, as a utility budget savings.
I'll come back to...
Come back to us.
We'll send an email.
Well, see, our goal is to have the work done over the summer. That's why we're having this agenda item done now. So, um, we don't, we haven't met yet to discuss timing, but I would say probably by late April. Hope maybe even at the April 20th meeting, we would have that answer for you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Jerry, can we have the personnel committee, please?
Uh, yep, yep, personnel did meet. We discussed, um, a few issues. Uh, we had the resignation, um, some childcare leave, maternity leave, um, and we did discuss exploring the, um, the supervisor for curriculum and instruction.
Are there any comments? Anne, can we have the policy committee, please?
The policy committee did not meet tonight, although everyone is now in receipt of two extremely large binders, um, which include all of the policies and regulations. Um, uh, sometime before the next board meeting, I will send out an email, because I thought that it would be included, but it wasn't. I will send out an email about which, um, numbers each committee is responsible for, and then, because this is, um, this is a policy review year, we're going to have to go through all of the policies.
I just want to remind the chairs of the committee that we need to constitute the policy committee.
Right, so, so for the next, yeah, so for the next board meeting, if you could select somebody in the committee to serve on the policy committee, because we actually also then have to review all of the bylaws, the, the policy committee will review the bylaws.
Okay. Are there any comments? Seeing as there's no comment, uh, we're going to move to public comment. Uh, but first, I, tonight, noticing that there is a substantial public comment, uh, in accordance with policy 0167, uh, I am going to limit public comment to three minutes. And please, uh...
Each, each person?
Yeah, each, sorry, three minutes for each person. Uh, there's a limited amount of public comment for three minutes. Um, so I just would like to, I will notify you, um, as time is running out, and please, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up, I would much appreciate it. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, and so the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and reserves this time for your comments. Yeah, and just, please sign in as well.
Kimberley Bevelacqua Crane, speaking as the HPEA president. We have a large staff presence here tonight because of the comments made during Superintendent Soto's budget presentation during the last board meeting, suggesting that the board investigate the potential financial savings by outsourcing our paraprofessional staff. That was the wording that was used. The suggestion alone was a shock to our members, and they have prepared several statements for you that highlight what they do for our students and the educational community on the whole. We are relieved to hear that our, that removing our kindergarten, PARRIS from the kindergartens is off the table. Are we also hearing from the Board of Education that they will not be entertaining the possibility of outsourcing our paraprofessional staff? Is that what we're hearing, that we are not entertaining that possibility at all?
There is nothing in this budget that reflects that.
Okay, that's great to hear. We can clap for that. We're still going to move forward with our comments, because we feel like, in order to support that decision, because there are tough financial choices that need to be made, and we see through your presentation that some of those have been outlined, we appreciate that they do not involve our paraprofessionals, but we are still going to invite people up to comment to support that decision, not to look at outsourcing, and to illustrate what it is that our paraprofessionals do in the classrooms, because many times people don't know. They're one of our most important, um, staff sections, and they do such important work for our kids, yet they are not often applauded, so this will be a good opportunity for us to celebrate them tonight. I'm going to read a few, hopefully I'll stay within my three minutes. Um, many of the paraprofessionals weren't comfortable getting up to speak, because it's not something that they do, so they asked, uh, other members to speak for them. We're not going to use names, and I have the first one here. What is a par, oh, and some of these, by the way, were also written by teachers in support of PARRIS, and that should become apparent through the comments. What is a paraprofessional? A paraprofessional reinforces what the teacher is teaching. I think there's much that the public doesn't know about PARRIS. Most of our training is done while we are doing our job. I have worked with first, second grade, regular classes, and have even been a one-on-one para with special needs students. Our jobs require us to be outside, no matter what the weather is like. We don't complain, it's simply what we do. This is done at Irving in the morning and at dismissal. Besides working in the classroom, paraprofessionals are responsible for lunch and recess. That may, means making sure that every student has lunch and that every student is in a safe environment during recess. We make sure the children go to the nurse when they don't feel well and comfort them when they are upset. That is not to say that teachers don't do this, but with a para in the room, they have time to continue teaching. We work hands-on with the children, giving them at least a little expl, the extra little explanation they may need. For all that we do, we are the lowest-paid employees.
Kim?
Yeah.
That's three minutes.
Oh, okay. And I'll finish this one, then I'll pass it on to someone else.
If you wouldn't mind, we're, I'm going to, three minutes, please, and then you can come back up.
Oh, all right, fine. Um, so we invite our people to speak about our PARRIS and anything else that you would like to say about our wonderful staff.
Thank you very much.
Tara Canavera, 351 C Crowell Road, Highland Park. First, before I say what I came to say, just to address what Ms. Gowan was talking about earlier, I would like to point out that in Irving, the Rising Stars Literacy Program is making great strides. My son is a part of it, and he's come a long way. That being said, my name is Tara Canavera, and I'm speaking on behalf of CPAC, which is the parent organization for special needs childrens in our district. You said the board is not considering privatization at this time, is what you said. So in case you are in the future, this is what I'd like to say. Our paraprofessionals are federally mandated. To protect learners with disabilities, it is required to have paraprofessionals in the classrooms, including one-on-one aides as classroom assistants when the number of children with IEPs is 10 or more. These men and women who develop an ongoing rapport with our children, year after year, are essential to the concept of inclusion, that children with special needs must learn side by side with non-disabled peers. Sadly, New Jersey currently ranks last in this nation in the level of inclusion, and our seasoned paraprofessionals in this district make sure our children get what they need. On a personal note, I can honestly say that Julianne, my daughter's prior paraprofessional, was the reason she was in this district and saved the district $120,000 for two years longer before I pulled her out. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I live at 124 Montgomery Street. As many of you are aware, I've been an elementary school teacher for the New York City Department of Education for approximately 20 years. In my teaching career, I have worked with many paraprofessionals who, as many of you would surely agree, work as hard as any classroom teacher inside the classroom. When I first learned that there is even the remote possibility of outsourcing our future paraprofessionals, and I'm quoting here, "searching for better efficiencies for our kindergarten paraprofessionals," I was left aghast. Our paraprofessionals are selected, vetted, hired, and developed by the Highland Park Public Schools. They are chosen based on their ability and experience. They get to know our children and often work with our most vulnerable in early childhood and those with special needs. Have you ever seen a special needs child crying hysterically on the first day of school, and then a week later, almost magically, running into the school? In addition to the classroom teacher, who leads in creating that nurturing culture, we mustn't forget the important roles our homegrown paraprofessionals play in the development of our children. Would any of you want any of your children to be served by someone brought in by a, most likely, for-profit company? Is this a new service being provided by Pearson that I may have missed? I've seen the results firsthand of outsourcing, based on my New York City career, and let me tell you, the results are not pretty. Just when I thought I had seen it all, coupled with this disaster, there is a line for a curriculum supervisor and curriculum consultant, who, let's be honest, probably hasn't seen the inside of a classroom in 20 years. Due to our precarious budget situation, we must be diligent in our allocations and focus entirely right now on the needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I reside most of my time in room 107, Irving School, kindergarten. Um, tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the kindergarten teachers. Um, I have been a kindergarten teacher in Highland Park for over 14 years. The paraprofessionals that I have worked with have been a vital and necessary part of my kindergarten program. They say that two heads are better than one, but when it comes to teaching and managing a classroom of five and six-year-olds, it's two heads and four eyes and four hands that really do the job. So, we need our paraprofessionals in kindergarten. They're partners in our teaching. With the Common Core standards accelerating the skills and the proficiencies that kindergarteners must master within a year, having a paraprofessional in the classroom is crucial. Students come to us all along the continuum of kindergarten readiness. Some students are ready to read, while others still need help in identifying colors, numbers, and letters. Having a paraprofessional in the classroom allows for us teachers to be able to differentiate our instruction and activities based on the varied needs of our students. Surprisingly, five-year-olds are not yet independent learners. They need guided assistance and support throughout the school day. Classroom teachers have more flexibility to work effectively in small groups, or give one-to-one assistance because of the presence of the classroom para. Throughout the past year, I have been afforded the privilege of attending many workshops where I have been able to meet with other kindergarten educators from around the state. I am shocked, when I speak with these teachers, to hear how limited their kindergarten programs are because of a lack of pares in the classroom. These teachers are unable to provide their students with the rich and child-centered experience that we offer here in Highland Park. Our paraprofessionals enable us to do more and to broaden the scope of what we offer to our kindergarten students. Outsourcing has been rumored as an option for keeping our pares while helping to save money. The talented pares who currently work with us have done so for years, and they are committed to our children. Many of these individuals are community members. They have grown up in Highland Park, their own children attend school here. They are invested in this community. Our youngest students deserve to have educator support that is consistent and reliable. Kindergarten may be the first school experience for some of our children. Let's bring them up in an atmosphere of security, stability, and love. Let's not shortchange our youngest learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Picasi. This is my 22nd year in Highland Park. This is my ninth year in kindergarten. I'm here tonight to provide the board and the community with some background information on the last time the district removed paraprofessionals from our kindergarten classrooms. Our kindergarten classrooms were without paraprofessionals for three years, in 2008, '09, 2009 to '10, and 2010, '11. This resulted in many kindergarteners enrolling in the charter schools. I don't know the specific number of students involved, or what the increased tuition dollars to the charters was those years, but I urge the board to investigate these past costs and consider the possible future costs in charter tuition dollars. In 2011, the board directed Dr. Wood, our superintendent at the time, to bring these students back from the charter schools. In March 2011, Irving had its first evening open house. Teachers and paraprofessionals volunteered to come in to do mini lessons, run workshops, and do literacy and math activities. We had open houses in February 2012 and March of 2013. The board then realized that our paraprofessionals were a valuable resource that we could no longer do without, and placed them back in the kindergarten classrooms in 2011, '12. I urge the Board of Education to look at the unintended costs of outsourcing or removing our kindergarten paraprofessionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
It goes up, it just won't go down.
It appears, my name is Aaron Schaefer, and, not that it appears that way, it is that way. My name is Aaron Schaefer, and I just moved into Placid Gardens recently, right next to Irving School, where my son goes. It appears I've stepped into the paraprofessional line, and I have nothing to say about that, but I suppose I will comment. To be honest, actually, my mother is a paraprofessional. She works with special needs students in Irvington, and she's also, right now, under a little bit of a crisis, where even though she works for special needs students, and obviously, as we've heard from many of the people speaking before me, these are where paraprofessionals are needed the most, they're thinking of removing some from their school. And I'm glad to hear that this district has decided against that, so I appreciate that. And maybe my mother will come over here instead. The thing that I wanted to speak about, actually, has to do with bug bites. My son has been exhibiting bug bites all over his body over the past couple of weeks. Yes, that's you waiting. And I want to get an understanding of the policy of how we deal with such things. We took him to the doctor, the doctor informed us that it was not the dreaded bed bug, so don't worry about that, we're all clean. But I was concerned that each time I sent him to the school, Irving School in particular, he comes back with bites. And we're unable to figure out where they come from and how it happens. Um, I hear, and this is hearsay, but I hear that there was a lice scare at the school. Many, many, um, parents shaved their children's head, as you might see, my child has done the same. But we can't find any evidence of what this is. The concern that I have, and the reason why I'm standing here up here, is when I was in school, and there was even the slightest inkling that there was a, there was a bug infestation, this head nurses would go through every single child's head to figure out what's going on, make sure that nobody else is bringing their, bringing infestations to, from home, to, from the school to a place. You don't want to get to your grandmother's house, and she doesn't want to have to deal with that. And I see that this has not happened here, yet. When his grandmother asked, uh, was informed that she was not allowed to check to the rest of the class for head lice, and was told that it was a decision made by the board. Of course, this is something that I was told, I'm not sure of the truth of the matter, but I would like to hear about what is done when such things happen.
Absolutely. So, uh, no, 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 no. I mean, we've been dealing with the head lice as a board for many years. There is different research on, um, what is the way to alleviate the issue. I don't know, do you, I, do you know, we did recently send material home in terms of ways to alleviate the infestations at your home. I don't know if we could...
Absolutely. Well, we sent literature home to each home, probably last month, I believe, that was an issue regarding some bites. What I will be doing is, I'll speak, I need your name, I'll speak to the school nurse. I don't want to go through every single protocol tonight, but I'm going to speak to the nurse to give you a personal call, to go over all the protocols, senor, or the literature if you haven't received that yet. I don't know, you're saying that your son came home with a big bug bite?
I was doing an experiment to figure out where the bites are coming from. I sent him to my mother's house for the weekend to see if he would come back with anything, see what was going on. Was it in the house where he sleeps? Was it in something like that? And each time, it only happens when he comes home from school.
Yeah. How recently did this happen?
Now.
Now?
So...
Wow. Okay.
We, we know that we can eradicate things in our, in our buildings. We can, we know that. But as soon as a student goes home and comes back, if the infestation is in another student's home, the issue manifests itself within our school, within our school system.
Of course.
And we can try as much as we can, we can provide as much information home as we possibly can, um, it just...
Now, there's another question. Is this an isolated case?
Right.
Because are there other children in the same classroom that have bites?
Yes.
Yes?
Nope, no, 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 I'm sorry, we can't, yeah.
So, I'm just posing a...
No, we can't do a conversation out of the podium. Sorry, but I'm really sorry.
Alright, so, we're, we're gonna get in contact with you, and you're gonna give us all of the details, um, so please be expecting a phone call from the school nurse tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
And I'd like to add that, you know, I think this is a, especially when you have a new website coming online, this is a great place for us to put this kind of information on the website, so it's more accessible for parents. And, you know, we can have our poly, you know, your, our school-level policies on the website, we can have helpful information for what to look for, we can have all kinds of stuff on there that is more accessible.
We can have that, but you also have to realize too, because what Adam said is, and when, if the parents at home don't follow this, if they want moral terms...
Of course.
...methods, or, you know, something that's really not going to cure, cure these certain things, and it's just, and then it's never going to stop.
Yeah.
But no, I agree with you, I think, I don't know what, you know...
Let's not get into a debate now, we'll talk about it...
...check out every student, because if it were me, I, I wouldn't let the kid back in until they were...
Perfect. Alright, sorry. We'll talk about it in new business if we don't, we need to talk about it further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anita Holcane, third-grade teacher at Bartle. I've been asked to read a statement for a staff member who can't be here today. Um, it is prepared by and on behalf of this staff member. As a staff member, I have worked here in Highland Park for the last 13 years, and work in all four buildings. The paraprofessionals that I have had the pleasure of working with are some of the most dedicated and loving people I have met. These wonderful people are on the front lines with your children. They provide not only educational support, but emotional and physical as, as well. From providing much-needed hugs to instilling personal responsibility, these individuals give of themselves for your children. I live in a district where outsourcing has come up and has, and was outraged by the very thought. I have worked in two districts where the pares were outsourced, and I could see the difference immediately. There was not the same level of dedication or knowledge of the children's needs. I implore you to take a very hard look at outsourcing and see that it is not in the best interest of our most valuable resource, our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ignacio Tevan, I'm the Spanish teacher in the high school, and I am planning to bring my youngest kids to Irving School next year. The pares and the teachers there are doing a fantastic job, and we hear all the wonder things that you do at the high school, too. Uh, I'm going to read a statement, too. Working as a paraprofessional is something that is an important part that makes Highland Park classrooms run smoothly. We work with students who have many needs, academic, physical, mental, emotional, and social. Our profession requires our attention, care, and support for our students. We work closely with our teachers to ensure that our students are focused and ready to learn by showing that we are there for each of them and are supportive when difficulties arise. We help our students rise to the challenge with encouragement to reach their potential. We form close rapport with our students, getting to know them, and by understanding each aspect of their personalities, making it possible to assist them with daily routines. This rapport gives students and parents confidence that they ensure a successful day. Understanding our students' needs is an important part of their personal growth and success. We see students as individuals, and work with their personal learning styles. As a para, we are a stable and reassuring aspect of the classroom, being a support to teachers and working closely with each student. We see their work, how they grow through observation and data collecting, and their awesome personal, emotional, academic, and social achievements in the classroom, gym, cafeteria, and other areas where we are needed. This thoughtful rapport with each student helps us give the teachers, child study team, and other supportive staff valuable information to best serve the students. Along with being able, along with being a stable part in the classroom, a strong sense of trust and teamwork strengthen the ties between para, teacher, child study team, and other supportive staff, again, giving students the best possible academic experience and success as possible. We do have challenges, but I believe the para cares so much so that we won't give up on the students and work hard to encourage their best potential. We are with the students throughout the entire day, and that stability is what is important to the student's success. It is important for the community to know how hard and how closely paraprofessionals work with students. I have been at Board of Ed meetings and have been at least two out of district worship these years. It is very inspiring to meet others working in the same position as mine, and to learn of their experiences. I look forward to other opportunities to grow as an individual and as a paraprofessional with Highland Park. It is important to have supportive staff working with your children and know that we care about their success.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Malednick, and, um, I live at 216 Graham Street in Highland Park, so I'm first going to speak as a parent real briefly, and then, um, as a teacher and a building rep, um, on behalf of my colleagues. So, first, I just want to say, as a parent, I have a daughter who's now in first grade, and she had a wonderful kindergarten teacher and an amazing paraprofessional in her classroom who she adored, and who, when she sees her in the community, she lights up, um, she would draw pictures to her, of her, um, you know, so she's just, uh, so, you know, the thought of, of not having Ms. Carlin, you know, or some, or the other wonderful paraprofessionals around, um, would be very troubling. Um, as a teacher, I want to say that I work with an amazing, I work directly with an amazing paraprofessional in our classroom, who is, um, one of the best special educators that I've worked with, um, and you're getting an amazingly low rate for the special educator. Um, so, I just want to read a statement from a paraprofessional, and, Mr. Sherman, if you could just wave your hand when I've got 90 seconds left, then I can edit my comments and just get to the...
In 15 seconds, you have 90 seconds.
Thanks. So just wave your hand in 10 seconds. Alright. Just kidding. Alright. So, then I'll kind of cut to the chase and, um, say, she wrote, "I'm writing a statement in response to Superintendent Soto's suggestion to investigate outsourcing the district paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals work with the most vulnerable, at-risk students. We work in one-on-one situations, in-class, large-group, support settings, self-contained settings, and life skills. In all of these situations, we work alongside the classroom teacher, and sometimes in a collaborative role, but always in a supportive and complimentary capacity." She goes on and talks about all the amazing things they do on a daily basis, their familiar, friendly face at the classroom door, they help their students, they help our students to get their first class because they have difficulty remembering or making sense of the rotating schedule. We implement behavior plans prescribed by the behaviorist and collect data for that plan. We meet with our classroom teachers prior to an IEP meeting to share thoughts and impressions on a child's progress, and then meet with the child study team on our own time. We act as a confidant to a student who just wants to talk because they are having trouble navigating adolescence. Then we communicate with the teen center to make sure that the students who are having difficulties get specific professional support. We teach and reinforce basic manners that will help students succeed in other situations. We sit with students for some time every day to help them master simple tasks like shoe tying, because those tasks are not part of the curriculum in middle school, and they're still having difficulty." Okay. Um, then, I want to just note this part. "Paraprofessional pay raise for the last three years was equal to less than $1 an hour. If I had to support myself and my family on my salary, I would not be able to do so without working multiple jobs. I know that I may come to school tomorrow and be told that my assignment has been changed because I am needed someplace else. I would have no recourse. Paraprofessionals are jacks of all trades. We are essential to the well-being of our students and school community."
If you don't mind, just wrapping it up, please.
Is that three minutes?
Yeah.
Can we spare an extra 15 seconds?
No, not tonight. We're, everybody's getting the equal time. Thank you. It was spoken about that this was a decision by Mr. Soto. This board asked Mr. Soto to look at all possibilities and to look at everything in evaluating the budget. This is one of a number of options, and that's the board acting on what the community, we thought the community would want.
Okay. I'm Darabatnik, I live at 348 Becker Street in Highland Park, and I'm also a teacher. And I can just say, I'm going to read a statement from another teacher, not myself, but I feel blessed to work with so many wonderful, warm, dedicated professionals, the paraprofessionals I work with. My colleagues and I have been remarking how well they have been paired by study, child study team, by Mr. Shlala, that there's just a beautiful working relationship that I see every day in the middle school. It's really, honestly, an honor to work with these professionals. Um, this is, um, I'm reading a letter from another teacher. "I have a wonderful relationship with my paraprofessional with whom I am blessed to work. The role of a paraprofessional should never be underestimated. In our self-contained setting, we are a team. While the responsibility of planning and instruction is mine, my paraprofessional assists and supports..." check your emails while you're in session, so I just wanted to point out to you that that is waiting for you in your inbox. And just to point out that that letter garnered several dozen parent signatures in just a few hours right before the board meeting started, so I think that's, you know, is a reflection of how people feel and how supportive they are of the paraprofessionals and the other staff at the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I did just check my email, and it does have about 40 signatures on it.
You shouldn't be checking your email at the board table.
There was a short break. My name is Sharice Richardson at 227 Benner Street. First, I just want to say to the paraprofessionals who are here, many of you have worked with my children. You've had all three of my kids, and it's been a really important part of their education. They're all very, they all have social anxiety, and each of you has contributed to helping them to adjust so well. Ms. Rhodey worked with Miles very specifically when he was a very young learner and helped him when he would just have complete breakdowns in the classroom. And she would recognize when it was going to happen, and before an outburst of any sort would occur, Ms. Rhodey would calmly take Miles by the hand and say, "Miles, let's go for a walk." And she would take him down the hall, and when he came back, he was fine. And the paraprofessionals do that type of work, which helps to alleviate disruption in the classroom. And that's for our, both for our most vulnerable learners and for all of the other students in that classroom so that the educational environment is not disrupted. So that's just on a personal level. I'm also going to speak as representative of Highland Park, parents of students of color as well. First, I'd like to give you all a save the date, which you'll all be getting via email as well, for a diversity dinner, which we are coordinating with the teen center, Elizabeth Osmoa, and the middle school principal, and we will, that will be happening on April the 16th. We invite community members to bring a dish and join us. We want everyone to come and share their culture, bring a dish representing your culture, and come and enjoy the evening. It's, I believe, it begins at 6:30, but I will be sending out emails to the board, and I'll also send those out to the school principals to distribute out to all the staff in the school, so I hope that you will join us for that. I was interested in the, within the agenda tonight, which I can't find where I, oh, that's the letter back there, if I didn't search it. Demographic study that is being done. I hope that the demographic study that is being done will look at population trends that will be occurring, how our population is changing. We, our number of our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunches has increased annually over the past 10 years. We are, I think, somewhere around 37, 38% students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch at this point, and our diversity is also increasing. In addition to doing a demographic study, though, I want to ask the board, together with Mr. Soto, to do a walk of the halls, because I have had many concerns from many parents that our high school and our middle school are very segregated. The classroom settings are segregated, and it's starting at an early age where our students are basically leveling out, and for whatever reason, whether they were policy decisions that were made, whether, and it could be completely unintentional policy, but it's something that the board needs to be aware of. As we continue to increase in diversity, there are a variety of communication styles that are in existence that the board has to take into account. Not every parent is going to come to this meeting and speak to you, and that's why I am here to speak for those people.
We understand your comments, but we're keeping strict three minutes tonight. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. Today, I wanted to talk about the park exam and graduation.
Can you speak? Please, give me your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery Street. I wanted to talk about park and graduation requirements for high school. For the 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018 graduating class, they have the option of having the park exam count towards the graduation requirements, or it could be the ACT, or it could be the SAT, or they could appeal it to even have a portfolio submitted. Starting in 2019, it seems to be very unclear what the graduation requirements are supposed to be. One website even said that park is the only option, but then another website said that nobody really knows what that's going to be. But then I also read in another article where they were saying that, according to New Jersey law, a student going into freshman year in high school, which would be the class of 2019, has to be told prior to starting school what the graduation requirements would be for their class. So it's like, they haven't made the decision about what the graduation requirements are supposed to be, but yet by law, they're supposed to tell us what the graduation requirements are supposed to be. I also wanted, I also wanted to share a fact I was looking up about the park. The total time required for a park is 11 hours and 15 minutes. Comparison to other exams, the SAT is three hours, the ACT is five hours, the GRE is two hours and five minutes. AP tests are 55 minutes each, the LSAT is four hours, the bar exam is six hours. The first test a medical school takes is seven hours. That's like after two years of medical school. The second exam that they take is nine hours, but that's again after, I think, four years of medical school. The third, the third exam that they take, which is done after they've completed all their education, which probably means they're about 30 years old compared with, say, a sixth grader, is 16 hours. So the only exam out of all these standardized tests that are larger in test-taking time than the parks is the one that we give to doctors after they've completed their whole entire educational process. So I just wanted to share that little tidbit of trivia.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Hold on, hold on. We're not, we're going to have comments during new business. We know that, we know, Ms. McFadden, we know the rules. We talk during new business, during for.
I don't think that this applies to the rules.
This is, the rules are, public comment is addressed to myself and to Mr. Soto. Anything beyond that, we talk in new business. Thank you.
Yeah, I do object, and I would like a review of the rules.
Okay. Thank you. 0167. There's, the policy is right here.
Do you know what she wants to say, though?
It doesn't, it doesn't, during public comment, comments are addressed to myself and Mr. Soto. Any other comment is discussed during new business and old business. That's the way the board policy is set up. We can discuss it, and we can discuss it in new business. Thank you.
I still object.
I feel like on a parliamentary subject, you can objectively discuss.
You can, you can have a parliamentary inquiry.
I mean, I don't know if you'd want to do that, but.
You can have a parliamentary inquiry if you would like.
Do you have a parliamentary inquiry?
What are you saying in here prohibits a board member from speaking at all during anything other than new business or during public comment?
Public comment is addressed in our, it might not be that exact policy that we have right there, but policy.
Well, then you would have to tell me what exact policy it is.
Policy, the policy of the board is that the public comment is addressed to the superintendent and to the board president only, and all other comments are reserved for new business and old business. That's the way the agenda.
Can you show me where this is in a bylaw or a policy?
I don't have the policy.
Well, until you can show it to me in a bylaw or a policy.
As the chair of this meeting.
This is certainly not the standard operating procedure of this board in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I make a formal objection if that's?
So do we take a vote on the rule? Or could she just speak?
There's certainly nothing in here that denotes that.
Okay. The board, as the chair of this meeting, I, we are going to discuss board comments during new and old business.
Adam, respectfully, we can make a parliamentary inquiry and have a vote.
You may.
A vote. Okay. Do we want to do that, or do we want to let it slide?
No, I'd like to. I mean, this is.
I think it's about time we do. I mean, this is kind of.
But you're asking about a procedure that may be covered under policy. Perhaps this matter should be investigated further. I mean, I, you keep looking at me, but I really have no idea what the answers are. I would have to look at the policies and see if there's anything in policy that discusses this.
Could we move, could I move, just that we vote on whether to allow Michelle to speak, regardless of whether it's? I say until Adam can produce where it says this in a policy or a bylaw.
As the chair of this meeting, I do dictate the flow, the flow, the procedure and flow of this meeting. And this board has duly elected me to do that.
So what is the purpose of a parliamentary inquiry and a vote? I mean, is that, I don't want to put it at this level.
I don't know the answer to that.
So why don't we take a vote? I mean, I don't want to do this. It seems like unnecessarily confrontational to take a vote about whether she can say something.
It's not, it's not if she can say something or not. It's the procedure that this board has been following and is following now, and I laid that out.
But, Adam, the board has not been following this procedure.
Yeah, it has.
This is something you decided at the last meeting.
No, that is not true. From day one, that is how it's been. I've stopped other people on both sides of this table from speaking, and it's.
I don't know. First of all, I don't think there are two sides of the table. Second of.
No, no, there are definitely this side and that side. There are two sides on me, of me.
Oh, physically, yes.
Left and right of me.
Yes.
I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Yep. So.
And with all due respect, I think that if that is the procedure, it has not fostered a community culture of openness and dialogue.
So if you look at number four, "All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address a question, a question or, to address or question board members individually."
That doesn't address board members being able to speak or engage in dialogue based on what somebody, Adam, I've been on that side of the podium, I've been on this side, I've been on that side, had dialogue with board members. This is a little overly strict.
Okay. This is the way, sorry, go on.
I'm just going to say, what we're doing right now is probably taking longer than what Michelle wants to do. Of course it is. Let's just, can we all, honestly, can we all move on and let's just do this. And then we can go back and have our other discussions about this.
Thank you.
Just for everybody's sake.
Yeah, I'm not insisting at all. I do want to revisit this later in new business.
Yes, we should.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Leibowitz, 250 Grant Ave. First of all, thanks to the board members for serving on the board. We really appreciate your time and effort. I also wanted to just add my comments about the paras very quickly. You know, I was listening to some of the comments, and I was comparing it to being a single parent, you know. I think, I think, you know, like, you have little kids, and it's dinnertime, and you have homework to do, and thank God, there's that second parent in the room, and it's, you know, I can imagine in a kindergarten classroom or first-grade classroom or pre-K, when you've got 20 of them, and it's dinnertime, and there's homework to do, and hand washing to do, that second person is just so key. And in particular, our paras, my experience with the paras that my kids have had, you know, it's 10, 15 years later, and they're still, when I see them on the street, asking how my boys are, asking by their name, you know, and, "Thank you, Ms. Colton. Thank you, Ms. Rhodey. You guys are just so loving and present with the kids. Really appreciate that. Thank you." And I hope you'll be here for a long time to come. And also, I'm so glad my kids were past kindergarten and first grade and pre-K during those years when there were no paras in kindergarten. Really happy about that. Okay, so many meetings ago, I talked about the student representatives, and, you know, we really appreciate their reports, and it's great to hear about all the wonderful things that are going on in the high school. And I asked if that we could, if it was at all possible, if we could include shared information about the other schools, and that it would be a really, I think, wonderful opportunity to bring some of the younger kids in on the process of the board. And I was just wondering if we've moved along on that at all. Everybody seemed to think it was a good idea, and I hope we can, I hope we can get to that at some point. You know, like I said, the student, our reports are wonderful. It's good to hear about everything, but we've got, you know, three other schools in the district, and we want to hear about them as well.
I think, I think that's quite fair. I think we should probably try to set our student, our high school student reps up with the principals, maybe, of the other, the other school districts prior to their, prior to their meeting to see what they could report out.
Okay. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Soto on his retirement, and of course, now we're, we're back to search, and I really, really, I'm very happy to hear that you're going to be hiring a consultant. That's great news, you know, and, you know, we need to learn from past mistakes, obviously, and I think everybody's on the same page. We know what we're looking for. And also, just in terms of the process itself, I hope that the committee's going to be very inclusive. I hope we're going to tap into the resources, resources right in our community and go beyond the community, and include on the committee our staff, administration, parents, community, Rutgers. We've got so, so much resource out there, and I hope we use all of it, because we need a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful next superintendent. I know we all, we all agree about that.
That's three minutes. We're going to.
Adam?
Yeah.
Do you have three minutes that you can give, or is it five minutes based on our board policy?
It's three minutes that I said at the beginning of the, of the meeting today, and I'm asking everybody to hear by that to be equal, to be fair.
Yeah, but I think our board policy is five minutes.
No, it's not. He gets to determine it.
Okay.
The board policy was changed this year.
Yeah. So if we could, you're more than welcome to come back, but I'm, I've tried to be, I've tried to be, I've tried to be fair to everybody, to give everybody three minutes. I apologize.
I won't read three minutes. Nancy Gravilla, NJEA, 1 Ethel Road in Edison's, where my office is. We've hit an all-time low with the board. I think the attempt to limit, when you have a number of people that you have here, is really just an attempt to silence the community, silence the staff, and I find it appalling to try and silence the people who sit on this board. We've had a lot of good comments, not only this meeting, but other meetings that I have been at, by the new board members, and it's been totally rejected by the majority of this board. When people got up here and were speaking, I took a picture of everybody, and I'm going to tell you, there were those people that were interested in listening, and there were those people that were tuned out. And I'm going to tell you, I think it is absolutely appalling that after the year that we had last year, that you're not interested in hearing what the community has to say, not interested in what you, what the new.
That's three minutes. We're going to...
Adam?
Yeah.
Do you have three minutes that you can give or is it five minutes based on our board policy?
It's three minutes that I said at the beginning of the meeting today and I'm asking everybody to hear by that to be equal, to be fair.
Yeah, but I think our board policy is five minutes.
No, it's not. He gets to determine it.
Okay.
The board policy was changed this year.
Yep. So if we could respect... You're more than welcome to come back, but I've tried to be fair to everybody, to give everybody three minutes. I apologize.
Nancy Corbella, NJEA, One Ethel Road in Edison's where my office is. We've hit an all-time low with the board. I think the attempt to limit when you have a number of people that you have here is really just an attempt to silence the community, silence the staff, and I find it appalling to try and silence the people who sit on this board. We've had a lot of good comments, not only this meeting but other meetings that I have been at by the new board members, and it's been totally rejected by the majority of this board. When people got up here and were speaking, I took a picture of everybody and I'm going to tell you, there were those people that were interested in listening and there were those people that were tuned out. And I'm going to tell you, I think it is absolutely appalling that after the year that we had last year, that you're not interested in hearing what the community has to say, not interested in what the new board members have to say. And there has been a deliberate attempt from the very first day that I sat here when people volunteered to be on committees. Adam, you actually asked people, "Tell me what committee you want to be on," and the first time somebody did not fit into your scheme of things, then you went and you appointed. I really think that if we're going to be able to move this district forward, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Soto has decided to retire, but I'm going to tell you personally, if things don't change, we're going to have another full year of education that's going to be lost. So I'm asking, and I think the community should demand, as they did at the ballot box last November, that this board work together and include the new ideas and the new comments from the new board people. Because otherwise, we're going to see another change in November. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm in technology, so I'm trying to write down my email address instead of my real address. All right, so I am Hava Friday Rice. I live at 62 Grant Avenue in Highland Park. I've been a resident of Highland Park and a teacher for eight years and I'm currently working for Rena Space Alco, a private girls' high school in town. I'd like to draw our attention to what I think is the real problem here, and I think you've really managed to distract everyone by threatening the paraprofessionals that we hold dear. And yes, they're wonderful and I'm glad we've talked about them a lot, but there are other issues in terms of the budget with the biggest one being a 4.1% increase. In comparison to last year, that doesn't sound so horrible. But the problem is that when you talk about a 4% increase year after year, you're talking about doubling taxes every two years. You're talking about 30... Excuse me, not every two years, every 17 years. You're talking about 35 years from now when you and I are looking to retire, because we're young like that, that they'll be four times what they are today. That means that at the time that I would want to retire, I'd be paying more in property taxes than I'm earning today as a teacher. That's not sustainable. Now, we don't want to cut our paraprofessionals. We don't want to undermine the quality of our kids' educations, but what we need to do is look critically at every dollar, no matter how small, to see, is this dollar really helping improve the quality of our education? Because if you compare Highland Park schools to 10 years ago, our scores aren't going up, all right? Our property values are going down and people's real wages are going down. So you're squeezing people so tight with these increases year after year. And that 31% of the district whose families are eligible for free and reduced lunch, do you think they really need to be squeezed anymore? So to draw your attention to a few things that I noticed in the budget, it's very hard to look at the budget as an outsider because the level of detailed user-friendly budget isn't very user-friendly. It doesn't really tell us much of anything. But in terms of what you gave today, you're talking about doubling the budget for the middle school, increasing the budget for the high school by 25%. Those are huge increases. Look through that long laundry list of projects and prioritize what can wait, what has to be done this year. Does every single one of those new musical instruments or expansions of the robotics program or new textbooks have to happen this year? What can wait? Then I'd like to ask you to talk to us a little bit more about the community building services initiative. How much is currently being spent this year? Because you talked about $20,000 increase, but what's being spent this year?
Zero.
Zero, all right? Don't spend $20,000 on community building. How about you respect the community, give them more than three minutes to talk and save us $20,000? Especially since Mr. Soto said he has no intention... You said, "I don't know how you want to spend this money yet, but we think it's a good thing to do." Just treat us with respect and save your money. Also, I'd like to commend you on deciding or suggesting that we could avoid hiring an assistant superintendent. At a district of 1,000 students, that's unjustifiable. There are schools three times the size of our district that function just fine. And I would urge you also to reconsider whether a district-level curriculum supervisor is even appropriate. You have principals. You have teachers who are high-quality, amazing teachers. Let the teachers who implement the curriculum write the curriculum and they'll actually buy into it instead of putting it on the shelf and doing what they think is right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shreece Richardson, 227 Benner Street, speaking on behalf of Highland Park parents of students of color. So as I was saying before, I want to ask that in addition to doing a demographic study that our board actually goes and visits every classroom when it's in session during the daytime and look at the racial composition of each classroom. Look at and find out, is this a CP class? Is this an honors class? Is this an AP class? Because the data that comes from the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights lets us know that there are zero African-American students at... In 2011, 2012, there were zero African-American students in 7th and 8th grade Algebra I in this district. Zero. Zero. 0%. You can look at the data. It's online. Office of Civil Rights, Department of Ed. We're doing a really great job for some students and we're doing a really mediocre job for some students in our district. We have some fabulous programs. We've got some outstanding programs. You talked about some fantastic things happening at the high school that are at a really high level. You know, the students are doing amazing, amazing things, but we have a huge breakdown. We also heard about problems with students transitioning from Bartle School to the middle school who are not reading at level. These are... These should not be in the same district even. You know, and we're not talking about, you know, some... I've had parents say to me, "Well, those must be just students who receive special education services that can't read at level." No, that's not the case. So you need to go and witness and see for yourselves what the racial disparities in our district are and understand that either by policy of the past or unintended consequences, however it has occurred, we have ended up with two education systems in Highland Park. We've ended up with one education system for children of the educated and children of the upper-middle class, and we've ended up with another one for the rest of the population of our town. And we really need to look at how we're going to remedy this, how we are going to encourage success for every single student, a high level of learning for every single student, a quality education. And I can tell you, Study Island, let me put it this way, New Brunswick District threw it out. New Brunswick does not use Study Island because they found it completely ineffective. I like to believe that my tax dollars that I'm spending are going to a better type of education for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to make some comments before. I wear many hats in the district. Besides CPAC, I'm also the vice president of the Irving PTO and I'm in that school a minimum of once a week. And these paras, they're the lifeline of that school and they love our kids and our kids love them. Now, the real reason I came here tonight before I found out about the para stuff, it's about the restraint policy. CPAC feels it's very important to have one. Having a child who had to be restrained by the police years ago because we didn't have one, I definitely feel we need one. That being said, we do feel that there's some rewording that should go into the policy, which we have shared with board members. And we are having a joint meeting with Highland Park Parents of Students of Color on March 26th to get more feedback from the community and to go over the training that our paraprofessional and teachers did go through. And you're all welcome.
Thank you. I think the board is evaluating two policies right now, one being the restraint policy and one being the transgender policy. And different board members are compiling a number of different information for them and going to present them to the board at a coming meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where's the meeting on the 26th?
I'm sorry, Reform Church, 7 o'clock. You will all get an email.
Thank you.
Do I sign in again?
Please.
Ellen Leibowitz, 250 Grant Ave. Just to go back to the superintendent search, but also connected to the budget and the community builder building position, I'm hoping that one of the attributes that we'll find in our new superintendent will be that of community builder. I think that's part of the job. I think it's a really important part of the job and I also think it's $20,000 of savings. Thank you.
Melissa Newman, 205 Montgomery Street. I had sent an email to the superintendent and to the board formally requesting that they look into creating an Algebra I honors program and I received a message back that said it was going to be passed to the curriculum committee, but I didn't hear any message about it in the curriculum committee's report. But a lot of it has been... The Algebra I honors class would probably help with the problem that the other woman spoke about, about kids in the middle school who don't take algebra. Because the regular algebra class, according to the documentation on the website, feeds into the regular geometry class, which goes along the regular sequence. Whereas if we could create an Algebra I honors class that's specifically designed to feed into the honors one geometry class, et cetera, et cetera, it might help solve the problem or at least help to solve the problem that the other woman spoke about, about the disparity and also giving kids another chance to catch up instead of saying by the middle of eighth grade, "Okay, if you haven't made it into honors geometry, forget about going into AP at the end of your high school." So again, I'm formally requesting that the curriculum committee look into creating an Algebra I honors program to help meet the kids that need a second chance to be able to make it into honors geometry. Thank you.
Dan Milatnick, 216 Graham Street, and middle school teacher. Just continuing the comments I was reading and making about paraprofessionals. Yet we are often not mentioned or publicly celebrated. Regardless of salary, job conditions, or lack of accolades, I have never heard one of my peers complain about a very difficult situation they have experienced. Instead, I've heard them problem-solve and work hard to make things better. I just want to pause there to interject that. Again, I worked with an amazing paraprofessional this year. Actually, Julie Acule, I'll name you because you deserve it. And that's... I'm not reading her statement. I'm just saying a couple of things about her. And another teacher and I both nominated her, wanted to recognize her for education support professional of the year. And, you know, we wrote statements and then we found out later, paraprofessionals aren't even eligible for that. So it was so frustrating, you know? I just feel like they get nothing. They don't get the pay, they don't get the recognition, and then, you know, we feel like we have to come here to defend them. And I do appreciate that. I understand that the board has already said that you're not going to outsource them, but I still just want to get this on record because, you know, I think it's important. As a part of the Highland Park community, I voluntarily attend CPAC meetings just because I want to know what kinds of issues are important to parents of children with special needs. Since January, I've attended four workshops on my own dime and my own time, only because I have a desire to serve our students the best I can. After an especially trying day, I'm reminded by my classroom teacher that it would take me no time to finish requirements for my teacher certification since I already possess a BS in education, special ed plus master's credits, but I remind her how much I love what I do and really have no wish to be anything other than the best I can be as a paraprofessional. Districts that have outsourced their paraprofessionals have experienced high turnover in employees. These districts lose trusted staff members and replace them with a revolving door of people willing to work at a low-paying, difficult job only until something better comes along. I think that's a very important point. They have traded a family of committed, invested, experienced, educated, and loyal employees for strangers to their school community who are willing to work for a few dollars less an hour only until they find a better job. I guarantee you that those who would lose the most in that situation are our students. The paraprofessionals who work in this district do so because of their commitment to their students and community. We have no other agenda, only pride in our work, admiration for our colleagues, and most of all, a deep love and respect for our students. So I just want to say that they mean so much to us and I really appreciate all that the paraprofessionals do for us. And I just wanted to also say to Mr. Soto, thank you for your service. You have been a positive leader and you exude a great deal of positive energy and you've won the respect of many people. And I remember on the first day this year when you addressed the staff, you talked about... You started with a very positive note and you talked about how much tone matters. And I agree wholeheartedly that the tone does matter a great deal and that's something for us all to keep in mind. Thank you.
Kimberly Bevelacqua Crane, speaking as president of HPEA. I'm just going to finish up the statements that our paraprofessionals worked so hard on. The last part of the statement that I had begun with is very important because it involves pay increases and it's really astounding how little increase, when you start off with a small salary, your increases aren't going to be that much either. For all that we do, we are the lowest-paid employees. My last increase was 15 cents an hour. That was an increase of $223 a year and $22 a month or $11 a paycheck. We have no tenure and can be moved to a different class or even a school in a moment's notice. I've worked for over 30 years in this district and that's something I'm proud of. My hope is that there will eventually be a better understanding of what a paraprofessional is. I invite anyone to follow us for a day as we do our jobs. And that's something I'd like to suggest to the board, again, in support of your decision to not outsource and not even entertain that, it might be a nice thing for us to have you come into our classrooms and actually see what our paraprofessionals and our teaching staff do. So we're going to look at putting together a Follow the Teacher for a Day program and invite board members to appoint members of your board to come and follow us for a day.
Thank you.
One more statement. As adults, we tend to forget how it was to be a child, how important a caring, devoted person is to a child's growth and development. For adults, life is complex, but for children, it is simple. They just need to know that someone cares. If they know that someone cares and is proud of them, then the sky's the limit for that child. By outsourcing paraprofessionals, we would be showing that we don't care. At the home, school is the place where the... After the home, school is the place where a child receives most of his teaching and nurturing. Just as most kids have a consistent, loving environment at home, the school must provide that same consistent, loving environment. You cannot provide that consistency by outsourcing paras. Staffing companies that provide teaching paraprofessionals are transient by nature. They are filled with people who are using that company to eventually get a full-time job with benefits. Historically, outsourcing has been a tactic used by corporations to save money. It is a cold, numbers-crunching method used simply to improve the bottom line. It is done without regard to neither the employees or the customer. Do we really want to apply that thinking to our schools? If you really want to know the effect of that outsourcing, that outsourcing paraprofessionals will have, don't ask the paraprofessionals, ask your children. Ask any of the 5th graders if they would be upset if the two Sandys or Teresa weren't around to make their day brighter and bring a smile to their face. Ask Ms. Rahi's resource class if they would be disappointed if Mrs. E. were no longer in their class to help them with their schoolwork. Ask hundreds of students if they would be greatly hurt if Jewel, whom the kids affectionately refer to as Ducky, were no longer at school. So before the decision would be made to outsource paraprofessionals, don't ask for the paraprofessionals who care for them every day. Don't ask teachers who rely on the paraprofessionals and don't ask, certainly don't ask the accountants who will crunch the numbers. Ask the children who will most directly be affected by the decision. So I'd like to thank our staff, I'd like to thank the board for listening to all of our... I'd like to thank the board for listening to all of our comments. Again, for your decision not to entertain this measure. And it really... It is amazing that how many people came out tonight and gave their night to support their colleagues when this was just a suggestion. It really shows how much we care about each other as a community. And we appreciate everything that our colleagues do as a family and a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, let's move on to the board action items. Michelle, can we have the curriculum and instruction motions, please? Two through three.
My computer froze.
Sorry. One through three.
Could I ask a question during the brief... Sorry about that. Is now the time, if we have a motion to amend something on this, that we would bring that motion?
I would recommend doing it under new business.
This is the last chance to say something about the action items. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, to the things we're about to vote on.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely. I thought we were talking about the old thing.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely. She has to move them first before we have discussion.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. I thought I had to say it first.
To move the curriculum and instruction, one, two, three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comments?
Well, yeah.
Not on curriculum, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, sorry. I'm so confused. It's coming, though.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right. It's late. Is there any comments on the curriculum agenda? Seeing as there's no comments, Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Catherine, can we have the finance, please?
I'm moving items one through 14, but I need to change one line on item 10. On total special revenue fund, the number is actually 1,223,791. And the total then is $32,83,117.15.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Could I move for an amendment? May I move to amend something at this point?
Is there any comments? Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry. That's a comment?
No, you go.
Oh, boy. I don't even know if this needs an amendment. I like Ms. Richardson suggested that we expand the demographic survey to include issues about the... Who's eligible for free and reduced lunch, whether that population is increasing?
The issues that...
That will be part of it.
Oh, it's already there?
Yeah.
Every issue that she spoke about is part of the demographic study.
Thank you. Let me see if I missed anything else. I don't want to miss any more votes like it was like four weeks ago.
Yeah.
Nope, I got it. Thank you.
Now, number 11. Is that authorizing bank cap now, or is it tentative?
In order to present or to submit the tentative budget to the county office, it needs to be a balanced budget. So if we were to amend the amount for that item, we would need to amend the total expenditures. And I'd need to know what we're not... What we're changing. We do have time. This is just a tentative budget. So we can move forward with the numbers as they are if you choose to and then discuss making amendments prior to the approval of the final budget.
I think that would be the recommended course of action is to approve the primary budget tonight. And there is definitely a number of comments that were made tonight that we should take into account for development of the next presentation.
Is this budget... Isn't it due tomorrow or something like that?
Well, no. For districts that have... Elections in April, it's due tomorrow. We have until March 20th. But that's before the next board meeting. So we need to have a vote tonight unless you want to amend it.
And this is just the primary budget.
It's tentative.
And we have... We can change it 180 degrees.
Sounds good.
As long as we can change it, I think.
I think, yes.
Okay.
Correct, Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a roll call? Are there any other comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Jerry, can we have the personnel, please?
Yes, I would like to move items one through six on the agenda.
Second. I.
Sorry.
Is there any comments? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute. Weren't you supposed to... There wasn't there?
No, we're not changing it.
No, we just...
Ms. Bull?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roselitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Being as there's no policy report, we'll move for the president's report. There is no president's report either. Can we have a conversation... Any old business tonight? No old business?
One thing I wanted to bring up was something that I had mentioned at the last meeting and I'd like us to consider more fully, which is the idea of searching for a volunteer grant writer position. I just happened to be speaking to Matt Hirsch, I don't know where he went, about something for the HP update. I'd asked him about it. And, I mean, he thought it was something that the borough could certainly help us get the word out about, even write a press release, you know, put some information out that would go out to everybody in town and try to see if we could get any nibbles on that idea.
I think that's a good idea. Would you be able to develop a job description, Mr. Soto?
Yes.
Thank you. Public doesn't know what they're talking about. We do agree on some things.
Well, I just think it'll be, you know, potentially hopefully a way to not spend money and bring money in.
And I 100% agree with that. So newborn members, all born members agreeing on something. So moving forward. New business. Is there any... Sorry, is there any other old business?
I think that we talked last time about a public advisory committee for the language, limited English proficiency learners. And I wasn't sure where that went or if we had made progress on that.
Yes, we have. As a matter of fact, Jett Nap is reaching out to, you know, several parents who formed that committee.
Great.
Any other old business?
I think last time we talked about the Spanish for native speakers in the high school. So I don't know if there's any interest or if we could find out if there's interest or if there's a possibility.
You know, we have not addressed that. But as a matter of fact, I was thinking about that today. I'll have that conversation with the high school Spanish teacher to see if there is even a need for that.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Too bad he left already.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that might be a literature class in Spanish. I don't know what that means, but...
We used to have it. We used to have the course. It just was... It fell with budget cuts of past.
And I know this is not old business, but I think that there's a lot of native Chinese speakers as well.
Yeah. There's a number of courses we need, from Chinese to coding to advanced French as well.
No, we have advanced French. We have AP French. We need AP Spanish.
We need AP Spanish.
We're good on Spanish, too.
We have AP French and AP Spanish.
Yeah.
I think... We have old business here?
Yeah, we have old business.
We don't remember. I'm trying to remember if... Did we bring up a Budget Town Hall meeting?
We did.
Last time we did, okay.
Yeah. The show will go on the road. I guess you're right, we should get some dates out. We will do PTO presentations. And we... Mr. Soto should get the next... The dates of the next PTO meetings.
I do still like the idea of doing what we did last year and having a dedicated meeting that's just for the budget, that's a little less structured, a little less formal, where people can come, just give input on that. They don't have to sit through any other kind of public comment or action items, or it is just a place for the public to come and give their input.
So the formal budget hearing on April 20th is that meeting. The budget presentation will be given. And then, as normal, we do public comment immediately preceding that presentation.
No action items, no nothing? I mean, it would be a regular board meeting.
Well, after the budget presentation, people can comment on the budget and hear the budget presentation. And it's sort of... It's self-contained. So then after that, there's business.
Yeah.
But they don't have to stay for it.
So it's budget presentation, public comment on the budget alone, and then regular meeting.
There's nothing else scheduled for that? There won't be any other items scheduled for that meeting?
Following the budget presentation and public comment, there will be a regular board meeting.
And how many... I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just want to tell... That meeting that you're referring to, how many weeks before the final budget is due is that?
That would be the final budget. The meetings that we've worked with... We are working with the borough now. We have advertised on our website and throughout this community that we have had last meeting, we have this meeting, we have another meeting, and then we have the meeting on April 20th. That is more than we've ever had before. And I don't see the need to expand beyond that.
But I think you're missing the larger point, which is that if we schedule something like we did last year, what that serves to do is it's not just the meeting that we're actually approving the budget and there's no more room for...
Changes.
Changes or input. It's a meeting that is solely set aside for that. So again, people don't have to sit through all of this other discussion. And if there isn't a lot more to discuss, maybe it'll be a very quick meeting and it'll only be an hour, an hour and a half. Maybe it'll be longer depending on...
Mike. Maybe rather than scheduling a new meeting, what we can do is rejigger the agenda for the next budget presentation so that there is public comment and budget presentation before the rest of the business. So perhaps we can sort of front-load a meeting with a budget presentation so people don't have to sit through everything else.
I think that sounds like a reasonable compromise.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Anna, would be the March 20th meeting?
23rd, yeah.
23rd, sorry. Okay.
So Linda...
That's the final budget meeting? Is that... Oh, the next... I'm sorry, March 23rd. Regular meeting. All confused, okay.
That's continued discussion.
Got it, thank you. Right, but that would at least give time then for input, not make people sit through a whole meeting if they don't want to. And then give us time to possibly act on anything that may come up.
Because the next meeting would be when we...
Then following meeting.
And nothing for nothing. When we only scheduled one meeting in April, we had said that we were only scheduling one meeting and wouldn't schedule another one because there would be the potential for an additional budget meeting. So we kind of put that... That was kind of built into the calendar to... But if we can do it this way, I'm all for doing it this way as well.
We can make the decision at March 23rd meeting if we do need another meeting. At this time, the development is on pace. And there is not a need, in my view, to put another meeting on the calendar. That might change after the next meeting. But as of this discussion at this time, there are certain things that we can iron out, I believe, as a board and not burden this community with another night of meetings.
So when you and Israel set the next agenda, so maybe if you just front-load the budget presentation, public comment about the budget, specifically about the... Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Any other old business?
Hi, I... I need to be defensive for a little bit. I object to the characterization of this board as people who are at odds. I think we're actually working very well. We're getting to know each other. And if there is a perception on the part of some members of the board that that is not the case, then we need to work that out as a board. But just because something procedural is called out doesn't mean that we are shutting down conversation. In general, our conversations are very good. I am affronted that people think that any member of this board is tuning out when public comment is going on. I, for one, do not stare at people while they're commenting. I do listen to every single word that is said. We all have a great deal of respect for the public comment. We appreciate that people come out and give their time and their input. We've learned a lot over the last two years. And we are listening to what the public is saying. I appreciate the paras. Many of us have children who have gone through the schools. We know what those paras do. And the... Or maybe some of us were parrot by paras. I don't know. I don't want there to be a perception that there is still a divide on this board. I think that's very important. And the other thing is about the racial disparity. We have talked about this, well, since I've been on the board, and I know that it was discussed before that. This is a huge problem. We've talked about it in the last two years. It's something that we're very well aware of. Again, our children are in the schools. We live with this. We have lived with this. And we have despaired about it for years. And I know that this group is going to move things forward. And I know that they can come in and work with the schools and be in the schools. And we're gonna figure this out. We keep on trying things and they don't work. And it's so frustrating because you just see the kids move through. And you know what future is ahead of them. And it isn't looking good. So this obviously is an issue that is facing our society in general. And it's facing the school. And we are working on it. We are not ignorant of what is going on. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much.
I hope none of my comments or anybody's comments suggested that you guys were ignorant of what was going on. I would never say that.
No, no, no.
Sure, right, 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 right.
Yeah, I appreciate you...
Yeah, thank you.
...hearing up if there's any misunderstanding. And I know that this is a serious issue for everyone.
We've heard a lot of the history. And it's, you know, it's quite extensive, as you said, going back 20, 30 years.
It is going back, yes, absolutely.
Probably longer than that.
We know, it's... There's... Yeah, it's been going on forever. And this board has, as Catherine says, we've tried a number of things. We've made a board goal. We've invested in different things. There's just... This is the one thing that has not been... That we have not been able to succeed with for any of us who's been on the board for a very long time or who have lived in this community for a very long time. So I really appreciate Ms. Richardson's commitment to this. And I think it will provide great value to our community. And just another hand on this issue is greatly appreciated.
Sure. Yeah, just to second that. I think that this new group, the Parents of Students of Color, is a necessary group. And I have a lot of hope that, you know, we're all on the same page.
Is there any other new business? I'm sorry, old business? Is there any new business? So let's address the issue that was brought up. Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Michelle, did you have, first of all, you had something that you wanted to share in your business.
Yeah, and Melissa's still here. I thought it was really interesting what she was saying about the number of hours that the children are sitting for the exam, because I think that it does feed into a lot of other discussions that we've had about time for other things, you know, in the day, in the month of March. I mean, the entire month of March, it looks like every single day, thanks to snow as well, like, has been kind of touched by the park in some way. And the computers that we have to use are, you know, limited to the students who are test-taking and whatnot. So I would like to be able to say to, you know, someone who has a comment and information in their comment, to say, can you please forward that information to the rest of the board? That's all I wanted to say to Melissa. So I would like to, I guess, you know, make a motion to revisit the policy that dissuades us from having a dialogue with the community, because I think especially in Highland Park, this is what we do. We talk to people and, you know, it's just making another unnecessary barrier in communicating with the community.
And I think if we were to look at any particular meeting, the amount of time that they may, that may add to a meeting is negligible. And, you know, all due respect, Adam, you as president would not have liked you as board member. I mean, like, no one did this more than you did as a board member. So you're putting this restraint on us as seated members of this board that you never had on you.
The policy, when I met with our board representative, the policy that we were following or the practice we were following was not the policy we have. The attorney backed that up as well. If we, if we would like to change the policy, that's a conversation we can have. But if we have policy, I believe it's something that we need to follow, and we changed the policy recently, including bylaws, to reflect changes of the majority of this board as well. And I just, I think that that's what we need to follow. If we have policy, let's follow it. If we want to change it, let's have that discussion.
What part of the policy were we following?
Does it say?
I don't have, I don't have the policies in front of me. I know what I was told and what I've seen, and there's a number, there's a number of policies that back up what I'm saying.
The school board rep has often said to us that public comment is not actually a time to interact with the public, or, you know.
Board meeting, no, board meetings in general are not a time to interact.
They are meetings held in public. They are not public meetings.
I appreciate her view. I don't necessarily agree with it. And I certainly think when there's a request for follow-up information, like, could I have the website or could you forward the information to us that we could possibly be trusted? I mean, if we moved to change the policy, we could probably be trusted if the policy said brief comments or something like that.
I don't disagree with that. What I'm trying to avert is that there is a lot of public comment. The public comment time is reserved for the public, and I want, I want that to be used for public comment. Board members, do you have this new business in the old business section for us to discuss amongst ourselves?
Well, at that point, the person is usually gone. I mean, as evidenced, by the time we're done talking, all the people who had commented are gone. I mean, you could even maybe modify something that if we have a question, we can direct it to you if you want to decide to direct it to that person or not. You can, but you're, you're not even allowing people to speak at all.
It's not that I'm not allowing you to. During public comment is.
Adam, you know that this has never functioned this way.
I think it's, I reject the idea that I'm trying to muffle this board. It's, there was one time, there was one time in particular that is reserved for the public where I am following the rules set forth by this board. It is nothing other.
I don't think the public enjoys it either.
It is nothing other than that. If we want to talk about changing the policy, we can change the policy.
But you'd have to, again, you'd have to find the policy.
I don't think anything in our policy allows you to prohibit any of the board members from speaking.
During that period, yes.
Yes, I disagree with that. We will look into it. I don't have the answer for you in front of me. I believe from what I've been told and what I've spoken to in my many years on this board that my understanding is correct, but let's look into it.
Well, I, I mean, I have, I'm sorry, Jerry. I just remember getting up to the podium and speaking directly with you back and forth, you know, and also, I think Mr. D spoke back, and, you know, there were several different interactions that I've had with board members as, as a community member at the podium. So maybe that's where the mistake was made in the past. I don't know that we need to really revisit that. But I think that if we're trying to include, you know, more of a dialogue, and we're trying to get the community involved, which is what I understand that all of us are doing, and I think Mr. Soto has been really supremely gifted in that area of making people feel heard by just saying, you know, just having, you know, to me, it's just basic manners. And if the board policy does not include, you know, human interaction that makes sense and that really fosters a community spirit, I think that we need to change it. So I don't know that we need to talk about what happened last year or this year or whatever, but I think that moving forward, we definitely need to revisit the policy, however it's worded, that prevents us from speaking with community members. Because I think that when people show up, they don't show up just to, you know, yap at us. I think that they're expecting some answer, that they come out of their homes, they leave their children. I think they would, you know, appreciate some sort of closure at the end of that process, rather than just waiting till new business or open-ended whatever email, you know, coming back to them. So I just think that it kind of makes common sense to change that policy if that is what the policy requires.
So let's get, have a commerce, let's look at Linda and I, or we all can look at the policies and see, yeah, you have your, you have your binders full of policies.
Unfortunately.
And let's, we can readdress this and.
Well, if you're saying you discuss this with Jonathan, Jonathan should be able to find it pretty quick.
Jonathan, I'm sure will, and I can forward you the opinion just like we did for the minutes as well.
Are we going to charge him? He's going to charge us $200 an hour to look up this policy? I can do it for free and just look through the policies.
Yeah.
See if you guys agree.
Whatever, whatever we want to do.
I don't think we should pay him for that.
It's, 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 it's a conversation we can continue, for sure.
I just think that in this period during the budget especially, as Ms. Freidenreich said, I think that this would really help the process along.
Right.
And I think as well, like, it probably is a good idea to revisit. I think a lot of it, at least in my opinion, has just been inconsistencies with the way we've handled it, because, I mean, I can go back before I was even a board member and long before you all started even coming to board meetings, that there were the times where they didn't, public comment was strictly that, it was a comment, they said what they wanted to say. And then sometimes we did get into the phases of a dialogue, and I also, in my opinion, the frustration of, you know, the past couple of years and, you know, with, you know, trying to be more transparent and then have the dialogue with the community, we kind of brought that back and forth a little bit more, but, you know, I think we just have to have a happy medium about it. That's all.
That's fair. So we will, we will address it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is there any other new business? Seeing as there's no new business, I would like to open it up for a public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and reserves this right, this time for your comments.
Sorry, I promised it'll be brief.
Nope, it's all right.
Tower kind of error again. I'm also on the Commission for Universal Access, and we received an email from a homebound resident, and also two elderly residents have approached me personally that the Board of Ed meetings are no longer being broadcast, and they haven't been broadcast since December. And I know I checked twice when there's, we're supposed to be on, and it's just a blank, blank screen. And when I clicked on the thing on my computer, but these people don't have computers, it again stayed a blank, a blank screen. I don't know if you have anything to do with that or.
I don't know about HPTV.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look into it.
Okay. And also, Mr. Soto, thank you so much for your service. It's been a pleasure knowing you, and good luck on your retirement.
He's not going anywhere yet.
You can visit, you can, you can visit him in Miami. What's the address?
Have a Freidenreich, 62 Grant Avenue. Mr. Sherman, I would like you to please thank Darcy for us for sticking up for the community that an April 20th hearing on the budget, when it's the night you plan passing the budget, is kind of useless.